Proclamation this evening, which is in recognition of sixteen days of activism against gender violence. And I believe we probably have some representatives from the Zonta Club with us. If you'd like to comment, please come forward while I read the proclamation. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas we as citizens of Billings, Montana, recognize the worldwide problem of violence against women that occurs everywhere, even in our community; and whereas gender violence is traumatic to the body, mind, and spirit, and can prevent people from being fully active participants at home and in the world; and whereas the health of parents and caregivers is critical to the overall health and well-being of their families and the larger community; and whereas we only have to look to our newspapers or watch a television newscast to see the unfortunate truth that domestic violence has yet been, or has not yet been eliminated here or elsewhere around the world; and whereas we, the citizens of Billings, support efforts of individuals and joint organizations such as the Zonta Club of Billings, to raise awareness, stimulate discussions, and advocate for statewide solutions that will curb gender violence; and whereas the citizens of Billings join thousands of others from around the world to affirm that the right of women and men to be free of violence is a fundamental human right. Now therefore, I, William Cole, Mayor of the City of Billings, do hereby proclaim the sixteen days between the International Day to Eliminate Violence Against Women on November twenty-fifth and International Human Rights Day on December tenth as sixteen days of activism against gender violence during and during those days encourage all Billings residents to support efforts to end gender violence and to eliminate the detrimental consequences that gender violence has on the well-being of our city. And Debbie, Renee, somebody want to chime in? You're welcome to do so.
Renee Kopick, Zonta Club of Billings. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I know your agenda's really packed. The Zonta Club of Billings wants to address what is a very pressing issue in our city, as Mayor Cole said, gender-based violence, particularly intimate partner violence. While this isn't a new problem, recent data underscores that it remains a serious and urgent concern, one that demands ongoing attention, resources, and leadership. Unfortunately, gender-based violence in Billings is a stark reality. According to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, thirty-seven point two percent of Montana women experience intimate partner violence and/or stalking in their lifetimes. Thirty-three percent experience rape. That's more than one in three women in our state touched by this cycle of violence. For indigenous women in Montana, the rate rises to forty-seven percent, a deeply alarming disparity. Domestic Violence Fatality Review Commission's twenty-twenty-three report documented thirty violent interactions resulting in forty-eight deaths. Since tracking began in two thousand, at least two hundred and forty-eight Montanans have died as a result of intimate partner homicide. In the reviewed cases, firearms were involved in fifty-eight percent of gender-based violence-related deaths, highlighting how lethal access to guns dramatically raises the stakes. The Billings Police Department reports that they respond to more than six hundred non-aggravated partner or family member assaults per year. In twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-three, the BPS averaged one thousand fifty-nine domestic violence incidents per year compared to about seven hundred and twelve for all other crime types. These aren't just statistics. They represent real people in our community, mothers, grandmothers, daughters, and friends, people who may be in danger right now. Lives are at stake. Gender-based violence also has ripple effects. Medical, legal, social service, and public safety costs all rise. It weakens the fabric of community safety. We can all take action. First, we must publicly admit there's a problem, which the proclamation does, and that's why we are asking you to sign the proclamation. As a community, we need to support local shelters and advocacy services. As Zontians, we will advocate for better policies and laws around firearm access for known abusers because every life matters in our city. We all need to encourage bystander intervention and community education to break the silence and the stigma. We all must also consider budget allocations to support shelters, transitional housing, and legal services such as those found at the Northern Lights Family Justice Center. We are really lucky to have that in Billings. Billings is on the right track. We are improving and facilitating partnerships between law enforcement, legal aid, social services, shelters, and behavioral health providers, but we can't stop here. We can't sweep these dire statistics under the rug because gender-based violence is not a problem that will solve itself. Yes, in Billings, we have the numbers, and they tell us that while we have made some progress, we still have a long way to go. These statistics should drive us to compassion, action, and lasting change. Let us commit today to supporting survivors, holding abusers accountable, and building a safer, much more safe community and just community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. That's it. Okay, very good. Thank you. And thank you for bringing the proclamation forward. Next item, our council reports. Any council reports, from council members on behalf of organizations that you serve on behalf of this city? Seeing none? A city administrator report. Anything from you, Chris?
Yeah, Mayor, just a few things. First, as cold weather is coming upon us, obviously we've got partnerships and other work that's done in the community relative to trying to help those less fortunate who are out in the cold. Cold weather is coming. We're also working with the Sheriff's Office. As you've seen in the news, their unfortunate situation relative to dogs. So they've asked us, under kind of a mutual aid, if we can find a way to assist them relative to the situation that they find themselves in. So Kevin and I are working on that with them. City offices will be closed later this week, obviously both on Thanksgiving, which one would expect, but some years ago, through our bargaining units, we've traded Columbus Day for the day after Thanksgiving. So you'll notice we were opened and have for several years been open on Columbus Day, but are not open on the day after Thanksgiving. So both Thursday and Friday of this week, city offices will be closed. There were two ex parte communications that came in regarding regular agenda item four B this afternoon after three o'clock. So those were in the notebook there for you. And I'm just going to reiterate also what Councilmember Neese did. I'd ask frankly that everybody in this room, hopefully we've got enough copies, picks up whether they want to use the QR code or billings2045.com. And though the survey will take you more than just a couple minutes, it's critically important that the community provide us with that feedback on land use planning for decades to come. So if you go to billings2045.com, that's an excellent way in addition to all the community events to participate in, also to take that survey. It's not the only way we're taking community feedback by far, but it is certainly one way in addition to all the events and activities in the community. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Good. Thank you, Chris. Our next item up then is public comment on non-public hearing agenda items. There was a copy of the agenda back by the doors you come in. This is the portion of the meeting where we have public comment on things where there will not be a public comment period later. So tonight, that's only items one, which is our consent agenda and all those subparts, and item four C, which is the Central Avenue subdivision annexation agreement. But that annexation agreement is part of the much larger four A annexation and four B zone change. So don't, if you want to comment on the annexation agreement specifically, feel free to wait until we get to item four. You're probably, most of the people out there are probably here for four B, so you'll have an opportunity to comment later. This is again just for, really just our consent agenda item one and any of the subparts that are on that. But if anybody does have anything that they would like to comment on, especially in item one, our consent agenda, now's your opportunity to do it. We just ask that you come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and keep your comments to three minutes. And for our clerk, tell us your name and if you're comfortable, your address, so we can keep track. So at this time, is there any public comment on item one, our consent agenda, or any of the subitems? Is there any public comment on item one? If not, I'll close the public comment period. No one is coming forward. No one's standing up. So we will close the public comment period on item one and move on to our consent agenda. Before we do so, Councilmember Aspiliner.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to separate agenda items one I and one J for purposes of recusal.
One I and one J for recusal. Are there other separations? I would like to separate item one B, short-term service agreement, Yellowstone Valley Animal Shelter. Are there others, any other separations? Okay, I don't see any. So we'll move to the non-separated items. Councilmember Gillick?
Yes, I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as submitted with the exceptions of items one B, I, and J.
Very good. Second, my Councilmember Neese. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Ripses?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I hate to do this, but for the bills for the week, October twentieth and twenty-seventh, it looks like there was an error in filtering or printing that report. As a result, two bills from a very close and significant client of mine, Alternatives, are on there, but they're for the amounts of thirty dollars and a hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Normally, they wouldn't have even shown up on this report. It's supposed to be only things over twenty-five hundred dollars. There was just an issue getting the report printed out correctly this time. I would normally recuse myself, but since they're so small and almost trivial, I'm not going to bother, but I just thought for transparency purposes, I should put it out there.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion on the motion for approval of the non-separated items? I'll just, we always make recognition of donations. In this case, we want to recognize Trailnet for the installation of the bicycle repair station in Colson Park, and they've done that in other parks as well. So thank you, Trailnet. Several thousand dollars for each one of those. Okay, seeing nothing else, we'll move to a vote on the motion for approval of the non-separated items. If in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Per separated item was item one B. I separated that. This is the short-term agreement with Yelson Valley Animal Shelter. Certainly not to oppose it, but just to clarify something, Council, in, and I'd like to, in my motion, I'll make a motion to approve here in just a second, but I wanted to point out two small things I think should be changed in this agreement, and this comes after conversation with our city attorney. And then Gina's also had conversations with the attorney for the Yelson Valley Animal Shelter. But on the first page of the agreement under other fee, section three B, it establishes a fee when, if the animal shelter is asked to take care of a large number of animals that come in all at once, and they're entitled to an extra three hundred dollars for each group of ten. And it was just unclear what a group of ten means. And so by pass custom, the lawyers would like to clarify that, that the first one through nine do not trigger that fee. But once you get to ten through nineteen, or anything in between, that does trigger the fee. And then next, twenty to twenty-nine, that sort of thing. So deals with that. Doesn't have to be just whole multiples of an even number of ten. And then second, in paragraph five F, there's the provision says that the animal control will cremate animals. Obviously, we do not have current access to the incinerator, so they would like to change that to be more general and just probably reference, it'll be our responsibility or animal shelters, I'm sorry, the animal control's responsibility to dispose of the animals. So my motion is, I would move to approve the short-term services agreement with Yelson Valley Animal Shelter included as item one B, with the condition that the city attorney, upon approval by Yelson Valley Animal Shelter and the city administrator, may make minor changes prior to execution, including to section three B and section five F. So that is my motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Boyett makes the motion, or the, the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. If in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item one, aye. Second final reading, zone change ten seventy-one, Clearwater Estate subdivision. That's, Councilmember Aspiliner's recusing himself. Councilmember Ripses?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd actually like to make a motion to approve items one I and one J on the consent agenda.
Very good. Is there a second? Second, my Councilmember Tidwell. Is there any discussion? Okay, if in favor of the motion to approve items one I and one J, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes the separated items and brings us to our regular agenda, item number two. Denise, we will have a joint public hearing on two A annexation and two B zone change. So would you read two A and two B together?
Yes, I would, Mayor. So it is a joint public hearing for the annexation resolution approving annexation twenty-five oh five, generally located south of Rimrock Road, east of Sixtieth Second Street West, and legally described as lot seven of Sunny Cove Fruit Farms. Staff recommends conditional approval on that item. And the other is a resolution approving zone change ten seventy-three. It's an eight point nine five acre parcel of land, more or less, generally located on the southwest corner of Rimrock Road and Sixtieth Street West, legally described as lot seven of Sunny Cove Fruit Farms. Zoning Commission recommends approval and adoption of the ten review criteria. This will require two separate votes.
Very good. Thank you. Karen is making a joint presentation, I believe, on both the annexation and the zone change tonight, so we'll turn it over to Karen.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me? So in relation to the joint public hearing, there are actually three parts altogether. The joint public hearing is for the annexation and the zone change. So the annexation policy requires a joint public hearing, but they require individual action. The zone change is requested from rural residential three to corridor mixed use one and two. And then the last item, the separate item, is award boundary ordinance, which requires another This is the annexation exhibit. The property is located south of Rimrock Road and east of Sixtieth Second. And this is the limits of annexation map. The green area is area And the vicinity map for the annexation and the current zoning, surrounding zoning to the north is N four, which is a large lot suburban neighborhoods, and to the south is rural residential three. To the east is N three zoning, which is suburban neighborhood. It's a city zone district. And to the west is corridor mixed use one, which is also a city zone district. And this is just an expanded view for your reference. So the annexation policy requires the location to be within a zone one or zone three. This property lies within a zone one of the limits of annexation map. And I'll have, I'll show you the attachments here in a second. The city will provide services. Public improvements will be up to city standards, and a waiver of right to protest will be filed. This falls in line with the growth policy and essential investments in prosperity. I have a couple photos for you, the subject property. This is looking south and looking Then to the west and to the east. So the proposed zoning is going from rural residential three, which is, allows a minimum of three acres up to nine point nine nine acres, and residential with some small-scale agricultural uses are allowed. The maximum lot coverage is twenty-five percent. The corridor mixed use one and two allow for single and multifamily residential and some like commercial uses. The lot coverage for corridor mixed use one is sixty-five percent, whereas the corridor mixed use two is fifty. The uses included in corridor mixed use are not just the residential, but neighborhood conveniences like daycare, grocery store, restaurants, financial institutions, and entertainment venues. The corridor mixed use two allows the same types of uses, but the entertainment venue is allowed on, at a larger scale, fifty thousand square feet gross floor area. The zoning commission has recommended approval and based on the findings of the review criteria. It meets the growth policies in line with essential investments in strong neighborhoods. The adjacent uses and zoning are compatible. The tool subdivision to the west is already corridor mixed use one inside the city limits. And then the northwest intersection is Coal Creeks subdivision, and it has corridor mixed use two zoned parcel. It's also inside the city limits. It also meets the intent of the West Billings Neighborhood Plan, established development patterns with commercial nodes on arterial intersections. It encourages planning in higher density and mixed use with the intent to bring neighborhood conveniences closer to the rural residents. So the recommendation tonight is to hold the public hearing on the annexation and zone change, take any comments, and act on the annexation. Staff is recommending conditional approval, subject to the annexation agreement. Failure to approve the annexation will prevent the council from acting on any related subsequent items. And zone change ten seventy-three, the zoning commission is recommending approval. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. We'll have, open up for questions from council to Karen. And Karen, will there be a presentation from developer or developer's agent?
Our developer's agent is present, yes.
Okay, present and available. I guess, would they like to make a presentation? Okay, we'll get questions of Karen first. So Councilmember Kennedy?
Karen, just a quick question. Is zoning now always single-family with multifamily? There's no such thing as just single-family?
Sir, yes. The zoning now, the state statute requires us to allow duplex as well as single-family in any residential zone district. So we don't have a mechanism to require only single-family dwellings in any zone district.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? And Councilmember Aspiliner, this is your company. I think you and your desire to recuse yourself. So that, just want to put that on the record. And you're nodding your head, so that's the plan. Other questions for Karen? Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Karen, on the next item, we're going to have item C, which is annexation agreement. Can you explain why we're not looking at an annexation agreement on this annexation?
I'm going to have to defer.
Councilmember Neese and Mayor and Council, this project has a subdivision that's coming right behind it within a meeting or two. And so the way we're planning in Public Works, we're coordinating this with the, with each other and the applicant, was that that was going to occur right afterwards. We are in discussions internally on sorting this out with annexation agreements versus subdivision improvement agreements and the timing. So I think in the future, you're going to see, we're going to address that. At every annexation, there's going to be potentially an agreement or a document with the waiver and stuff upfront. But anyway, we've, this one is happening because there is the subdivision right behind it.
As I, but as I understand, the subdivision waivers that are included in that one versus the annexation agreement has the waiver in that one are really vastly different in the sense that the subdivision's only good for twenty years, and the annexation one is in perpetuity. So are we not, and maybe I missed it, I thought we were doing it, but maybe we're not, are we not doing the annexation, the waiver of right to protest in this, this property that we're annexing?
So you're correct in the sense that normally, yeah, with the annexation, that's when we do those, the forever waivers. And so, yeah, in this case, we didn't have that in place, but we have the subdivision one in place. It's, like I said, we need to fix this process in terms of how those are being done. I can say in this case, at least from the standpoint of like Rimrock Road improvements and such, that that's happening and this, you know, property's going to participate, and that's, that's actually scheduled right away. So, but that's not, you know, normally the situation. So, yeah, we have to get that aligned so that every single time, we have clearly the waiver regardless of the subdivision coming behind it.
Okay. Is there any reason why we can't, because those waivers are similar in a lot of ways other than the timing? Is there any way, any reason why we can't condition this to have that particular waiver signed with this annexation that we're approving?
Yeah, I don't see a reason you couldn't condition, I mean, with annexation, you know, you could add that as a condition. Okay. That's the council.
And with, following up on a conversation I had with you this morning, and I appreciate Councilmember Neese raising this same issue that I was concerned about this morning. By statute, the subdivision waiver is limited to that twenty-year period. So I don't think we have flexibility in the subdivision waiver to make it not twenty years. So it's really going to have to be a very, a separate thing. And so will there, when will that waiver pop up? Because the condition here is a mutually acceptable subdivision improvement agreement. It is not an annexation agreement. So where are we going to put that waiver? And is, so what I'm hearing is there is not going to be an annexation agreement here?
Mayor and council, I, yes, the, what I just was, in the conversation with Councilmember Neese, is that if the council would like to add the condition tonight to this annexation, that the waiver be executed, that that is something you could do to, to address that. We're going to, regardless, the subdivision is going to come forward and we're going to have the SIA. But if you'd like to add that condition for the waiver, you could do so.
Since a waiver would typically be attached to something, an annexation agreement, is there any problem with, in the resolution of annexation, where there is the condition that says within forty-five working days and prior to site development, a mutually acceptable, normally we would say annexation agreement, if there'd be any problem with just putting that in, say, annexation agreement, and subdivision improvement agreement? And then it'll be up to you guys. And you said this morning, you would be bringing back to us these other documents, so we'll have a chance to review them later. But just adding annexation agreement and in front of subdivision improvement agreement, would that be okay with staff?
Mayor and council, I believe that would be okay with us to work through. Yes.
Councilmember Neese, that meet with your concerns?
Yeah, I believe that would be fine because the annexation agreement includes the waiver.
Exactly. Okay. When we get to the point of motions, let's try to remember, we actually had this conversation.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions for Karen before we ask the developer or developer's agent if they have a presentation for us? Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any. Taylor, Craig, whoever?
Can you hear me okay?
There it is.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Taylor Casperic. I'm with Performance Engineering. We're the owners and the developer's agent on this project. Thank you, Karen, for the presentation. I would just like to note the difference in why we've got CMU one and CMU two included on this application. As you can see, the CMU two portion is in the southwest corner of the property, is largely for the project that's spurring this whole development, and that would be Patty Shack. The owners, Grant and Jess Skelzy, are here as well, and they would be happy to answer any questions you might have about that particular development. But this is really planned to be a community But this is really planned to be a community-oriented area in town. With Patty Shack being the anchor of it in the southwest corner, the rest of this is planned as CMU one, that would allow for restaurants, offices, retail, coffee shops, a lot of those uses that aren't currently existing in this part of town, and people are having to travel, you know, at least two miles to get down to Albertson's, Den, Diamond X, that area of town, or even more, if they're looking for other services. I think those are great examples of commercial uses that are going out towards where residential uses are, so that those people aren't having to travel so far into town, putting stress on the city's road network, and other facilities that have other impacts that would go along with that. The reason for CMU two versus CMU one in that southwest corner is largely because of the, the size of it. So, CMU one would only allow for a smaller recreational facility, both indoor and outdoor, whereas CMU two allows for a larger-scale recre, adult, or recreational facility, which is what Patty Shack will be. Largely, you know, this is going to be, or this, the intent of this is a community-oriented development. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have on this.
Questions, Councilmember Wyatt.
So, thank you. One of the things I've heard is that people in the area would be opposed to lighting. Can you explain the lighting for this big complex, especially in the evening?
For sure, yeah. So, I mean, as we probably all know, commercial, commercial uses generally do have site lighting, keeping parking lots safe, making sure people can find their way around the development. With that being said, our zoning code does have specific requirements as far as what that lighting needs to look like, having it oriented down towards the ground, cutoff shields, other provisions that would prevent the lighting from this development from going out into the surrounding areas.
Very good. Other questions? Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, traffic is always the issue on Rimrock Road. You're in a really interesting segment here where, you know, you get the roundabout stuff like that. Is, is there going to be access on, to Rimrock Road, or is it going to be coming off of 60th Street there?
Yeah, and this ties to the forthcoming, coming subdivision application as well, but there would be two planned accesses for this development. One would be actually a shared approach with Truly Ridge subdivision, which is immediately to the west. So, there'd be one access off of Rimrock Road. 60th Street West borders this property on the east side of it. And so, full development, 60th Street West will be constructed, and a second access to the development will be off of 60th Street rather than Rimrock Road.
Great, thank you. Very good. Other questions for Karen? No other questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time then, we'll open it up. This is a public hearing on item 2A and 2B. So, 2A is the annexation of this property, and 2B is the proposed zone change. So, if you'd like to comment on either the annexation or the zone change on item two, this is your opportunity on Rimrock at the corner of sort of 62nd. Is there any public comment on item 2A or 2B? If so, please come to the podium. Just ask, keep your comments to three minutes and tell us your name and address, and if there's others, make a little, little line back there, so we know who else would like to talk.
Hi, my name is Susan Walton, living 28 in our 32nd street. I'm here on behalf of Tom Romein, who owns the two properties that are adjacent, that are to the south and to the east of this zone. And so, he, his questions were, instead of the CMU zoning, what about the neighborhood mixed zoning, which as defined focuses on daily needs primarily for adjacent neighborhood residents, such as corner stores, personal services, and small restaurants? With the exception of the southeast and northwest corners of Rimrock and 62nd Street West, there are no other CMU zonings along the entire length of Rimrock Road. The CMU zoning allows a multitude of uses, many if, if not most incompatible with this area, including motels, bars, casinos, large retail, and vehicle sales. So, they were just wondering why they didn't consider the neighborhood mixed zoning. He also talks about the fact that, according to that comment, that the other commercial amenities for the surrounding neighborhoods were two miles away. He's contending that they are one mile away on 54th and Grand. And so, one mile is hardly a cumbersome distance. Indeed, virtually all of the tens of thousands of residents living north and south along Rimrock Road from 5th Street West to 54th Street West and beyond function quite well, being a mile or more from commercial businesses. And he, he was also concerned about the traffic on Rimrock Road. He's saying, what's being ignored is a massive increase in traffic to such a development from east and north of this project, as people from Yellowstone Country, Copper Ridge, Ironwood, the subdivisions along Rimrock and 54th Street West, and all along Rimrock to Shiloh, who instead of going south on Shiloh, 54th or 62nd to exist, existing commercial businesses, will travel west on Rimrock, increasing an already burdened street and making traffic even worse than now that exists for residents. The last thing finally was, while there are requirements for the zoning code for separating commercially zoned areas, addition to residentially zoned areas with fencing, berms, and intensive landscaping, no such requires, requirements exist for commercial and residential areas separated by the street, in this case, 60th Street West. Without a non-access strip along 60, say for the south 400 feet of Lot 7, the value of my residentially zoned property to the east will be negative of effective necessity in the cost of a barrier on a strip of ground, perhaps as much as 3/4 of an acre, to separate the commercial on Lot 7 from the residential on my ground to the east. I can't speak to his comments. I was just sent to read them, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you. We'll ask, when we're done with our public hearing, we'll ask staff and also give an opportunity to the developers' agent to comment on those questions or any other public comments as well. Next.
Mr. Mayor, council members. This zoning that we're requesting.
And Paul, if we can get your name.
My name is, sorry about that. My name is Paul Clark. I'm from the south side, south side triangle, of course. When you're putting in the looks of Central, Broadwater, Grand, Park Hill, maybe, now Rimrock, it's going to get commercial. It's going to have heavy traffic. You've got people from neighborhoods, and you've got people from businesses that want to use that road. Get it together, you guys, because it's coming. So did Grand, so did Central, so did Broadwater. Anybody that's been in Ward, TJ's Ward, or even in my Ward down on Ward 1, the traffic is going to be there. So, you're going to need, and I'm just an outsider, guys, I'm just a retired truck driver. Look it, if you're going to use Grand, use it for a business, what's there? If you're going to use Rimrock, use it for a business, what's there? She's asking for a buffer zone. Here it is with my, my hat, my issue, parks. I know we can't afford them, Mr. Scott, I know this, but we have to maintain them somehow. There's money somewhere. We've got to be able to use it. We've got to be smart. How nice would it be to go to, say they put a business up in there, all right, kids, we're going to buffer it in the park zone before we go back home, okay? It's there, this land, it's coming, you guys. This ward is going to come. You can't do nothing about it, stop it. The malt road goes up, there's some beautiful neighborhood, homes, neighborhoods up there, but you've got to get it together. Plan for the parks for the people. You've got businesses and neighborhoods. What's in the middle? A nice park. Does it have to be wide? No. Can it be, we're talking square lots, so eight, you know, 54th to 62nd, what is that? Two miles, three miles? I'm not sure. But there is going to be 800 yards, 400 yards. Hey, it'd be nice to have a trail, nice for some parks, playgrounds, you know? Get it together, city, that's what I got, I'm out.
Good, thank you. Other public comment on items 2A or 2B? Is there any other public, public comment on item 2A or 2B? No one is standing up, no one is coming forward, so we'll close our public hearing on item 2A and 2B. I don't know if there was any staff or rebuttal or other comments from staff or our representative on anything you heard.
Thank you, Mayor. I can just address a couple of the comments that were brought up. One of them being the existing traffic on Rimrock Road. Obviously, as, as moving through the T I, or the subdivision process, we are preparing a T I S for this. But also, I'd just like to point out that the city is being very proactive in this area, and there's actually a road widening project planned for next year even, which will help out a lot for both the existing traffic that's there, as well as future development in the area. As far as why we went with a CMU versus, versus other, you know, mixed-use districts or maybe lower, lower-density districts, largely it comes down to that recreational aspect. CMU two is the best zoned district that fits Patty Shack and what Grant and Jess are looking to do. And those, CMU one would provide that, that complementary use for the Patty Shack facility. I realize that CMU does allow for, for uses such as casinos, bar tavern, et cetera, that some of those other zoned districts may not. However, I would like to point out that each of those listed zoned districts that are, that are often issues for neighbors or concerns for neighbors, they do also have stopgaps built into the zoning code, for instance, requiring a special review if they're to be utilized, certain setback distance from residential uses, from, from parks, from religious institutions, from residential uses. So, while those other uses are allowed within CMU, this wouldn't be the last time that you hear about it before something like that would go in. So, lastly, I would just note that Rimrock Road is a principal arterial. It is one of, one of the busier streets within the city, and will continue to be one of the busier streets within the city. It is a prime location for commercial use. The zoning code, growth policy, everything else points to having commercial or high-density uses along principal arterials, and this proposal falls directly in line with that. I would like to open it up if there's any questions for Grant and Jess also.
I think it'd be great if they would like to just say hello or anything they want to add. So, this is our developers and those property owners.
Thanks for having us, Mayor and council. This goes back to when we first.
If you would just introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jesse Skelzy, this is my husband, Grant.
Grant Skelzy.
We're very excited to be bringing something like this to Billings. I grew up here. We spent time in San Diego and Austin and got to see what, you know, various community-enriching developments might look like, serving residential communities in that area. And we're a young family. We've got a three and six-year-old, and we really are focused on bringing a town square type environment to that part of town, where it can feel like a third space for those homes, and they, their kids can ride their bikes, you know? And that's really the type of development we're, we're aiming to create. So, yes, we are the owners of the, of the Patty Shack, which will be the upscale pickleball social club, but we are also shepherding the entire development. The genesis of this development started with the Patty Shack as the, as the anchor business, but we have a lot of influence over those surrounding businesses and making sure that they're cohesive. So, hopefully, everybody's excited about bringing something like this to Billings, but definitely open to hearing any questions.
Any questions for Jesse or Grant? Don't see any, so thank you very much. Grant, did you have something?
No, just saying thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you so much, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we have closed the public hearing on this item. Back to council now. Council, do we have further discussion, questions, or motions? Councilmember Neese?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Having conducted a public hearing, considered written and spoken public testimony, I move to approve a resolution, conditionally approving annexation 2505 as recommended by staff with the addition of, with the addition of the annexation agreement, or, I'm sorry, annexation.
Is that mic on?
Testing. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, broke it.
I did.
There it is, okay. Maybe we're fine.
With the addition of adding the annexation development agreement.
Okay, so, there's a motion to approve item 2A annexation, but in the resolution to add the words "and" annexation agreement, and second indicated by Councilmember Rogers, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Neese, you'd like to speak to your motion? Councilmember Rogers, speak to your second.
Yes, I, I think this is going to be a really nice area developed for commercial. I think that's something that's needed out there. There's a lot of homes being built out there, so I think this is going to be a really great opportunity for development like this there, and then other commercial businesses to, to come there. I think actually eventually it'll probably take some of the pressure off Rimrock Road, but this is the kind of thing we need to see, not just developed here, but when we have large neighborhood developments all around, more small commercial nodes, something like this. In fact, we're looking for some, some of that stuff up in the heights as well, so we look forward to these type of things coming in, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
Yeah, and I was just going to reiterate the, the same thing, that I think this will keep some of that traffic in that area and alleviate that back and forth that can become troublesome, so, good job, you guys.
Very good. Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Gulick?
Yeah, I'll also support this. I think it's good to have a, a good distribution of, of commercial throughout your community. So, the more, as, as was Councilmember Neese said, smaller ones all distributed closer to, uh, community, means, makes it more walkable, bikeable, less traffic demand on our streets, so.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Then I'll have to chime in to, ironically, this project goes back, before there was anything before us, I did speak with the developers at the time who were looking for a site, and I encouraged this project, I supported it. I think it's a great, it'd be a great addition to the neighborhood and to the community. I will now explain why I will be the only person who votes against it, probably. It has nothing to do with the project itself, but I, just to be consistent, council, you know where I'm going. This is within the benefited area, the one and a half miles from Cottonwood Park, and under paragraph 21(c) of that development agreement going back 23 years ago, the city is required to make reasonable efforts to the extent permitted by law, as may be, and as may be negotiated on individual basis in discussion of the city, to obtain contribution from such person or developer to fund the development and/or maintenance of the park. Seeing no indication in the staff report that that process has occurred here, I am compelled to be consistent with my past position to vote against the annexation. If the annexation passes, which I fully expect, I'll vote in favor of the zone change. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, if in favor of the motion, which is for approval of item 2A, please say aye. If opposed, say nay. Nay. Voting in opposition, myself and Councilmember Tidswell, all other council members voting in favor, the motion passes nine to two. That then brings us to item 2B. Again, we need, and Councilmember, I apologize, the vote was of 10, so it was eight in favor, two opposed. Councilmember Asmiller did not participate. Brings us then to item 2B, the zone change. Is there any, either motion or further discussion or questions on item 2B? Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you. Wyatt, for the sake of the audience and the people out on TV land, let's say I, as a council member, don't like this zoning. I don't like CMU one there, and I don't like the CM two where it is. Do I have, does the council have the ability to say, "We don't like that, but we suggest a different one"?
Councilmember Wyatt and Mayor and council, you would not be able to do that this evening in this process. You wouldn't be able to change the zoning that was applied for and noticed and legally noticed and went through the process to get you to tonight. So, you wouldn't be able to modify it at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Having conducted a public hearing, considered written and spoken public testimony, I move to approve a resolution approving zone change 1073 and adopting the findings of the 10 review criteria as recommended by the zoning commission.
Very good. Councilmember Gulick, just to spread it around, makes the second. Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Gulick, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, I didn't say anything earlier, so I just want to add to the chorus of.
Sure. I didn't say anything earlier, so I just want to add to the chorus of, I think this is really exciting for this neighborhood. Getting these commercial nodes out into more of the outskirts of our city is really important. So I'm really looking forward to this project. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Very good. Councilmember Gillick?
As someone who did participate in the West End Plan many eons ago, when you were on the planning board, actually, this is exactly what was envisioned at that time. I support it.
Very good. Thank you. Now, further discussion on the motion? Motion for approval of item 2B. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll proceed to a vote. If in favor of the motion for approval of item 2B, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, say nay. Everyone voting in favor? So motion passes. Councilmember asked, Wyler did not vote. Motion passes 10 to zero. That then concludes item 2, brings us to related item 3. Denise, would you read item number 3?
Public hearing and first reading ordinance expanding the boundaries of Ward 4 to include recently annexed property in Annexation 2505, generally located south of Rimrock Road and east of 62nd Street West and legally described as Lot 7 of Sunny Cove Fruit Farms. Staff recommends approval.
Very good. This is to add the recently annexed property to Ward 4. Is there any staff presentation? There's no staff presentation, so is there, are there questions or is there a motion on item 3? Councilmember, oh, I apologize. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment? This is a public hearing on item 3. Is there any public comment? If so, please come to the podium, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Any public comment on item 3? No one's standing up. No one's coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing. Now, back to Council. Is there a motion or other questions or discussion? Yeah, usually we defer to our Ward 4 representative, Councilmember Tidswell. Do you want to make the motion to add to your kingdom? Very good. Is there a second? Second, my Councilmember Boyet. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Motion for approval of item 3. If in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. If opposed, nay.
Mayor, quick point of order.
Councilmember Neese.
Yes, Scott Aspliner is not here, so this is not a recusal item. So he would, instead of being recused, he'd be marked absent. Is that correct?
I guess technically that's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that-
Yeah, we'll establish that on the record. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, I believe that I had taken the ayes, and I believe they were unanimous, and that there were no nays, correct? Okay, the motion passes 3A unanimously. 10, no in opposition. Councilmember Asplider is not present with us. He stepped out as indicated by Councilmember Neese. That concludes item 3 and brings us to item 4, the main item of the night. We have, so Denise, would you read item, this will also be a joint resolution. So would you, or I'm sorry, a joint public hearing on the annexation and the zone change. Well, I take that back. Our agenda does not recognize a joint public hearing. So Wyatt and Karen, I'm assuming, will just handle these separately. Oh, he does. I'm sorry. I was looking at 4A and B, but it's in the header. Got you. So, very good. So Denise, would you please read 4A and 4B together?
Yes, Mayor. So it is a joint public hearing for Annexation 2506 and Zone Change 1074. Those are resolutions approving Annexation 2506, generally located north of Central Avenue, south of Broadwater Avenue, west of 44th Street West. Legally described as Lot 3 of Barber Farm Subdivision. Staff recommends conditional approval. And then a resolution approving Zone Change 1074, a 55.46-acre parcel of land, more or less, generally located north of Central Avenue, between 44th Street West and 48th Street West. Legally described as Lot 3 of Barber Farm Subdivision. Zoning Commission recommends approval and adoption of the 10 review criteria.
Very good. Thank you. So we'll have our, Karen is our presenter. We have a full house tonight, so as you saw before, we'll have a presentation on both 4A and 4B, i.e. the annexation and the proposed zone change. And we'll give an opportunity for the developer or the developer's agent to comment. And then we will ask for questions from Council. And at that point, we'll open it up for a joint public hearing on both of those items. So with that, we'll turn it over to Staff Wyatt.
Yeah, yes, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Before Karen begins the presentation on the joint items, I wanted to call your attention to some of the documents for this item this evening. And there are paper copies at your desks this evening, and we've coordinated with City Legal as well as the Clerk. But we discovered that several of our documents, the annexation resolution, the zoning resolution specifically, had some errors this morning regarding the mechanics, basically, of the annexation process and then the zoning, because this is a phased annexation. So there's two phases. And we discovered errors, and the mayor helped point this out as well as our city attorney this morning that there was some errors there. It's a mechanics error, so I'll just say that first. It has nothing to do with the zoning application process or the annexation petition process. Those are all, are fine. It was the way the documents basically interrelated to each other. So at your place, you do have a revised annexation resolution for this property. And I'll just briefly highlight a couple of the items that we addressed in there. The main thing was the referencing to the phasing. And if you look at Section 1, territory to be annexed, it references now subject to the conditions set forth in Paragraph 2, which we added, and the phased effective dates in Paragraph 3, which was also added. If you move from there into Section 2, after you see the legal descriptions, you'll see that we added language in Section 2 and 3 regarding the both, that there's an annexation agreement that's part of the action this evening. And also, the territory to be annexed in phases in 3 has an effective date for Phase 2. That could be December 31st of 2031. And then there's some allowances for the developer to request it sooner. And then if you go to Section 4, also regarding the effective date of the resolution, obviously, because this is phased, we have the tracks that are affected this evening. And then in Phase 2 would be effective at that December date. So those are the items, that's the language in that that was adjusted today to make sure that it matched up with this phasing. We have done three of these processes. This is the third one, actually. We did Ridgeline subdivision out at 48th and King, and we did Timberland, excuse me, Timbers subdivision, Alkali Creek Road. Both of those followed the same process, and we just ended up with some mechanical references there that were off. Do want to just quickly reference you to the resolution for the zone change? Same thing. We had to make sure then that the proper phasing references are in this document, because of course, as the city annexes property, you zone the property. But you don't zone property that you haven't annexed. And you don't, obviously, if you have an annexed, then that's not in the city. So we wanted, we had to make sure we had corrected that and made sure those two documents complemented each other. So if you look at Number 2 Amendment, you'll see that we reference in there Phase 1 of the annexation and PND includes, and then it describes the property, which is actually that first requested annexation phase. And then we attached the Exhibit B, which shows you that phase to make sure it was clear visually. And then in Number 3, zoning map, we also noted, the zoning master plan includes zoning for Phase 2 that will be adopted by separate resolution at the time Phase 2 is annexed, which again is in alignment with how we've done these in the past, because obviously, until it's annexed, it's not zoned. So I wanted to make sure I called those to your attention, that language. And then the last document was just, was the ordinance for the Ward Boundary. And we just had to make sure that obviously, you're amending, you're bringing property into Ward 4 that's actually been annexed. Obviously, the part that has Phase 2 is not going to be in Ward 4 yet. So the Ward Ordinance only addresses the first portion. When we come back for the second phase of the annexation, that would be addressed to that time. So just wanted to walk you through those. Again, it's a mechanical process issue to make sure that the documents are all in alignment as we go forward this evening. And we, everyone, as I said, including the Clerk, has the current documents. So with that, unless you have questions on that, I will turn it over to Karen to walk you through the overall presentation.
Thank you, Wyatt. Karen, before you start, Councilmember Kennedy, City had a question. I just want to make sure, Councilmember Kennedy, we're not jumping ahead of ourselves that your question is just specifically to these changes in the documents as opposed to the-
That's what I want to-
Very good. Go ahead.
Wyatt, I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So Phase 1, that I'm looking at, and I'm looking at the map, on Phase 1, it's only, we're addressing the zone change on the lower half of that area, correct?
So Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor and Council, what's your, yes, in terms of the annexation and what actually will come into the city and be zoned at this time, you're addressing that Phase 1 portion. However, you're reviewing the entire zoning plan for this property, because then, when it comes in for the Phase 2 annexation, then the zoning will also be done at that time. So you're looking at the whole thing, but the annexation and the zoning for this evening will be that Phase 1 portion.
So the question that I have for you is, if we're only doing the bottom half, then until 2031, the top section will not be built unless requested sooner? And it would have to come back to this Council to decide to go forward? Or it would take place in 2031, correct?
Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor and Council, I think part of what you stated, yes, I think I'm tracking on that, yes. Tonight, you will annex the Phase 1 area, and that will be zoned and brought into the city. The overall zoning plan and annexation plan then is currently set to either be brought in on December, by December 31st of 2031, or before, as you stated, if the applicant or the owner requested it. And we have a process that's described in there. At that time, you wouldn't do a new zoning application process. So you would be annexing, following the zoning that's been approved, you know, that's been reviewed here, and then bringing it into the city.
So the question I have is, if the owner decides to come in before 2031, does it come before the Council?
Councilmember Kennedy, the annexation would come before you, but the zoning wouldn't come before you again. You would annex, and then the zone, it would follow the zoning master plan that you're looking at tonight. So yes, the annexation would, the zoning you would follow, what's already, what's the master plan that's proposed here this evening.
Okay, I'll, Mayor, I'll follow up after this because I have a couple more questions.
Okay, and while you're thinking about that, Wyatt, I would just call your attention to Page 2 of the Zone Change Resolution, the new Zone Change Resolution in subsection 3, zoning map. And the second sentence that says, quote, "The zoning master plan includes zoning for Phase 2 that will be adopted by separate resolution at the time Phase 2 is annexed." So there would definitely need to be a resolution that would come back. We approve resolutions, so it will come back in some form at that time. So we'll, we'll need to define what that looks like and to what extent our hands are bound or not bound in a year, two, three years, three years, four years down the road. Karen wanted to comment on that. Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, I just, a lot of these things might be answered in my presentation.
Okay.
Just-
That's a good segue.
Oh, I just wanted to-
Why don't you go ahead and shed light? Karen, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your patience. So this is a joint public hearing, again, Annexation Petition 2506 and Zone Change 1074. And again, we have the joint hearing and then a Ward Boundary Ordinance after. I won't detail it since we just covered that on the last application. And here is your annexation exhibit. I want to point out that if the annexation passes, but the zone change fails, the property is not annexed. And if the annexation fails, the zone change cannot be acted on or the Ward Boundary Ordinance. This is a phased annexation in two phases. We have, again, Wyatt just covered this, but we've processed phased annexations in the past, Ridgeline and the Timbers subdivisions. And our Limits of Annexation shows the property within our Area 2 on the annexation, Limits of Annexation map. You can see to the west, that is also within that area. The area that's white is already in the city limits. To the east, here is the vicinity map for a reference. And the existing zoning. Currently, it's agricultural. The south across Central is Corridor Mixus 1. To the west is N4, which is a large lot suburban residential. There's a PD to the east, which is inside the city limits, and then Rural Residential 1 to the north and to the east. So Zone, the parcel is in Zone 1 of Limits of Annexation, and the city will provide adequate services. All public improvements within the area to be annexed will meet city standards. And the property owners will, within the area to be annexed, will sign a waiver of right to protest, creating the creation of special improvements. And the residential property owners will join the existing Park Maintenance District. This will support Cottonwood Park. The annexation, along with the zone change, are in line with the intent of the growth policy guidelines as well as the West End Neighborhood Plan. And the development meets all of the State of Montana requirements for development, which is outlined also in the zoning regulations. Phase 1 of the improvements included in the subdivision will be through the annexation agreement. And then Phase 2 of the improvements will be through the subdivision improvement agreement. Did I say that right? I've got some photos for you. This is looking north and south where they're starting some work for the Corridor Mixus 2 Zone District. Looking west and to the east. So the Zone Change Review Criteria is not only under our zoning code, but it is state statute. And that's where our zoning code criteria came from. Montana Code annotated 76-2-304 is inclusive of those zoning review criteria. When evaluating the mixus plan, Neighborhood Development, staff and the Zoning Commission applied the 10 review criteria required under the state law and our local code. This criteria is to ensure that any zoning decisions support the growth- This criteria is to ensure that any zoning decisions support the growth policy, protect public safety, and promote orderly urban development. And the following summarizes how the determinations were made. The zoning code criteria, again, is the same as our Montana State Code. Should the council not want to follow the Zoning Commission recommendation for approval, findings for a denial will need to follow these criteria. And as you know, the Plan Neighborhood Development is a tool that was designed to allow more efficient land use decisions, runs concurrent with an annexation, and applies to anything over 10 acres. It helps to build new neighborhoods that are walkable and sociable. It allows, this also allows the phasing of that annexation, but it adopts the full zoning plan in advance, and the zoning would be implemented during that phasing. It also provides more detail on the new neighborhood infrastructure, your roads and streets. And then outlining, outlining the uses. Agricultural is a minimum of 10 acres. It allows residential and agricultural uses. I wanted to point out to our zoning regulations, allow other uses such as marijuana cultivation, sand and gravel mining operations, and commercial feedlots in the agricultural zone district. Maximum lot coverage for that, any, any buildings is 10%. The N2 is our mid-century neighborhoods, allows single and two-family residential development. 40% maximum lot coverage, and the maximum height is two stories. The Corridor Mixed Use One allows for single and multifamily residential structures and some light commercial uses, and I'll touch on those. It has a maximum lot coverage of 65% and a maximum height of four stories. But it also requires that those stories are stepped back. So the second story would have to be a specific distance behind the front facade, and the third story would have to be a distance behind the second story facade, and so on. The N1 neighborhoods, NX1 mixed residential neighborhood also allows single and multifamily with some light commercial uses on a smaller scale than the CMU One, 60% maximum lot coverage and a maximum of two and a half stories. And then the P1 district is for parks and recreation. I did want to point out, we touched on this earlier, that state law removed single-family only zoning allowances, so that two-unit structures are allowed in all residential zone districts, and we have no way to restrict development with duplex housing. And we cannot force them, through zoning, to only build single-family dwellings. The NX1 uses allowed are residential schools, daycare centers, emergency service centers, just to touch on a few. And the corridor mixed use, in addition to those uses, allows some of the desired local needs like general retail, grocery or convenience stores, restaurants, and banks. So in the surrounding zoning, here, again, to point out that the N2 is the majority of the development in the center, and then we have your NX1 to the north, your Corridor Mixed Use to the south, and there's a piece of NX1 buffering the CMU and the N2. And then there's the parks area. And additionally, I have a couple of red marks where there's proposed open space, it'd be private parks. So adjacent uses and zoning. The commercial zone to the south is two acres of CMU across, across Central. This development would include 3.46 acres of Corridor Mixed Use One within the project site for a variety of, of businesses, while maintaining compatibility. There's a mix of housing types allowed within the N2, NX1, and Corridor Mixed Use One, ranging from single to multifamily, nine-plus dwelling units per structure. It's a variety, offering a variety of residential options, options adjacent to county residential zones. Touching on the surrounding zoning, Cloverleaf subdivision has densities, Cloverleaf and Sundance have the densities from just under one to 2.28 dwelling units per acre. 44 West and Clearwater have densities of 9.42 dwelling units per acre, and Twin Pine Condos has a density of about 5.94 dwelling units per acre. The proposed mixed use PND provides approximately 6.7 gross dwelling units per acre or 7.55 net units per acre, striking a middle balance that respects the character of the surrounding neighborhoods while meeting the plan's goals for a range of housing types and densities. And just to give you a highlight of that, my, to the north Cloverleaf, my slide got cut off a little bit, but the Cloverleaf is, I believe it was 0.8 dwelling units per acres. And then the Wells Garden Estates has an average of a little, just under two units per acre. Sundance is just a little over two, two units per acre. Clearwater and 44th is about just over nine units per acre. And Shiloh Estates is an average of 0.8, where Twin, Twin Pines Townhomes averages 5.94. And the Barber Farms is at 6.67 gross or 7.55 net. Sorry. So this development is compatible with the urban growth in the city of Billings, and as the new development would be primarily residential, it would be compatible with the surrounding county zones. The zoning allows the same type of development as the neighboring residential zones. It's a middle balance that's called out in the growth policy and the West Billings Plan. We also need to look at the desired connectivity. Projected expansion of roads for connectivity, adequate emergency access and utility connections are required. This development comes with new infrastructure. We don't get the infrastructure until we get the development. Development requires the developers to participate in the expenses for that infrastructure. This slide shows the connection to Central Avenue and expansion of a portion of 44th, which will be in Phase One. The connection to Broadwater and the north portion of 44th will be in Phase Two, with the developer providing the south half of the portion of Broadwater, and then the city to develop the north half at a later date. All, there's, all of the streets within the Cloverleaf subdivision are actually public streets, and they have dedicated right-of-way that would help with the expansion in the future, projected expansion of 46th and 44th. There's also a projected connection in the future, and there are no dates on these when they're going to be developed. It comes with the surrounding development, the connection of Broadwater to Shiloh. All of these connections and improvements are, are, like I said, they're subject to the, the surrounding development. The properties have to develop in order for those to be improved. I've included this slide to show future development from Central. Yellowstone County already has plans to install a signal at 48th and Central in 2026. The city has planned improvements in conjunction with the phases of development and the contributions provided at that time. Zone Change 1074, as I showed, it, it meets the growth policy for strong neighborhoods, a mix of housing types, essential services, walkable connectivity, home base, housing choices affordable, interconnected sidewalks and trails, homes that are safe and support healthy communities, and then essential investments. It meets the intent of the West Billings Plan, establishment's development patterns, and with commercial nodes on arterial streets. The project, it offers a range of housing types, creating appropriately scaled commercial nodes along Central Avenue. The proposed zoning supports these objectives by providing a mix of residential, single, duplex, multifamily, to meet diverse population needs. The inclusion of CMU One commercial uses created convenient neighborhood destinations, fostering walkable and social interaction. By locating development near city infrastructure, the project uses public services efficiently and promotes orderly growth. Commercial and residential integration also contributes to long-term economic activity. The zoning supports adopted cities' policies for mixed-use neighborhoods, efficient development patterns, and housing diversity. And protection from fire and other dangers. They all have to comply with the city standards, setbacks, building separation, building code, fire department requirements, comes with your subdivision regulations, subdivision improvements, adequate emergency access, hydrants. This zoning is designed to maintain safety throughout the development and maintain self-building, separation, emergency access and fire protection. Traffic impacts are analyzed for infrastructure with the development. The zoning provides a mix of allowed uses and densities, and I'm, I know I'm sounding repetitive, but these are all of the requirements that we have to look at. It provides for transition between county subdivisions and higher-density city neighborhoods. It allows placement of commercial uses along a corridor rather than an interior street on an arterial. It utilizes existing utilities and city services efficiently and reflects existing patterns of urban growth and the suitability of the property for both housing and neighborhood services. So the recommendation tonight is to hold the joint public hearing and take comments on the annexation and the zone change. Staff recommends approval, conditional approval of the annexation. Again, failure to approve the annexation will prevent council from acting on the subsequent items, and the Zoning Commission recommends approval and adoption of the review criteria of Zone Change 1074. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. We'll open up for questions of Karen, and when we're done with questions, Karen, we'll see if the developer has any comments. Councilor Rebsis, Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. Karen, I'm sorry, I was a little slow on understanding something. Could you go back to the slide that showed the improvements, expected improvements to Central Avenue? I thought I had heard you saying that there was going to be a light at 48th and Central, but then it looked like there's one at 44th on that slide.
That was the city's projected improvements. Because Yellowstone County is already proposing the 48th and Central. That wasn't on the slide.
That's, that's different. But yeah, could you bring that diagram up? I just, might want to just take a screenshot of that real quick. Perfect. Thank you. I can look at that and take other questions.
Okay. That's it. All right. Councilmember Kennedy.
Karen, could you move the one right above that, 18? Okay. Looking at 18 here, I, and then I'll have you go to one other map. Up to 18 here, the, if they're improving the lower half of this, then the projected expansion of 44th Street West will only be half-built. And then the projected expansion of 44th Street West will need to be built also, correct?
Yes, sir. It will be with Phase Two.
It will be with what?
With Phase Two of the annexation.
Phase Two. So they'll have to put that in. What about the projected expansion of 46th? When does that come in?
They do not have a date certain on when those are going to be improved, and it's not going to be anytime soon. Debbie Mellings is here if you have, if you have specific questions.
The, the real question I have is because if 44th has to come in with the north half of this, why wouldn't you have both of them come in at the same time? Because that will alleviate a traffic problem.
I'm going to let Debbie answer that question for you.
Okay. Before you do that, then let's go back to, I wanted this, you have this one? No, it shows, it shows the zone, and then the top there, it shows the green on it. And the only reason I'm asking this, so the people out there know what I'm asking. Okay. So you have the green at the top there. The green at the top, you're anticipating with Broadwater Avenue, that you're having an NX1 in that area, which I guess if you had all of those streets and everything built out, it would probably make sense. The problem I have with it is, coming tonight, to ask us to approve of something with the possibility that this is going to be built out, I, I can't support that. So I would ask that we take that NX1 over the top out of this and leave it all NX2.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir. I don't know if there was a question.
What I'm asking is, can we amend that?
Wyatt, this goes back to, to the question that was asked earlier. This is the developer's request. So we don't have the power to make changes. We have the power to reject or accept, but would you address that question of amendment?
Yeah. Councilmember, or Mayor and Councilmember Kennedy and Council. So yeah, you wouldn't be able to amend that tonight and change what the zoning that's in front of you is. This is what's been asked for. The application went through the Zoning Commission, went, did all the legal notices to bring us to tonight to show what is being asked for and what's been applied for and what's been reviewed. So you wouldn't be able to, tonight, change to something else or take it out. That would, you'd have to, they would have to start back and have a new proposal. So that's the short.
Is that your question, Councilmember Kennedy?
Yeah. I, it kind of leaves us in a real spot. And that's a, that's a piece that's a sticking point with me. I guess I would like to know about the 44th and 46th.
Debbie, could you come forward and address the timing, or possible timing of the north extensions or MAC Focussen or city engineers coming forward? When those might happen and whose responsibility they would be, 44th and 46th?
44th and 46th, because they're the two that are mentioned in here.
On either side of Cloverleaf.
It's slide 18.
Mayor and Council, there we go. 44th Street West, which would be Road C on this map. Obviously, it's proposed in several phases. Phase One would be the, the south half of that. The, the developer obviously is proposing that in two phases. I don't have, I mean, there's not a current capital project for the extension of 44th from Broadwater to Grand. We are setting some infrastructure up for that, water, things like that, but no plan right now for that. Extension of 44th from Broadwater to Grand, you know, today.
Do you have on Broadwater there, do you have the funding to build that?
The Broadwater along the frontage of the project in question here would be, at least the, the sort of south half of that would be constructed with this, this development.
So if you do not have the projected expansion of 44th Street West all the way to the north there, where would the traffic go?
Well, currently as proposed, this development would connect to Broadwater, complete Broadwater. Broadwater currently is constructed west to 48th Street.
Thank you.
Okay, some follow-up. Sure, go, Councilor Owen, please.
So I don't mean to jump the line here, but while you're here, Mac, I'm struggling to understand the traffic patterns here. So if there's not funding for 44th or 46th, aren't we just going to dump a bunch of traffic in 2032 onto Bluegrass?
No, no, no.
Hey, excuse me, excuse me. I guess I should have said something before. Once we get into the whole clapping business, we got problems, so please don't do that, okay? But go ahead and address that connection or clack connection.
Councilmember Owen, we have a traffic study, and it looked at these very questions. So one, it looked at the first phase. Basically, 100% of the traffic is going through two streets onto Central, and there's kind of a step level of improvements that are required with that. With Phase Two, traffic is still primarily going south. There is no physical connection to Bluegrass proposed with this development.
And so, Mac, if we can just clarify, the map that's shown here is from a plat, and that's why it looks like there's a connection, but in reality, there's a cul-de-sac and a dead end, so there is currently no connection into Bluegrass, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so everything on this screen that you have up in front of us, everything except the piece going right through the proposed annexation is not funded. It's not happening right now, at least in a five-year CIP window, right?
That's correct.
And then if we're looking to this proposed concept of connecting Broadwater all the way down to Shiloh, do we have a right-of-way to do that? Could you actually construct it?
Not to, there's a skinny little 30-foot right-of-way through the, between the Billings Clinic property and the Yagan property right now, but there's not a full right-of-way going east for Broadwater yet.
Okay, so what you're telling me, just to be clear, is this project, as it comes in right now, there is no way to access Broadwater? Am I understanding that correctly? Through the middle of subdivision?
When it'll access Broadwater at its second phase, yes.
But the mayor just said a dead end.
Right, but we're talking about a physical connection. The other question was, is there a connection to Bluegrass? And my answer was no. There's a disconnect there.
And that disconnect is Broadwater?
Well, yeah.
Right? Hang on, I'm not understanding here, because I'm trying to understand if someone can drive from the middle of this proposed subdivision and get to Bluegrass.
The way it's, the development is proposed in the agreements, they would not physically, we would leave that physical connection till the future until there's some future catalyst, either Cloverleaf asks to have that connection or some other catalyst, but they're not physically making that connection, but the right-of-way would be connected.
Okay, so you could walk across it or something?
Theoretically.
Okay. And then the last question, and then, Mayor, I'll get back in line. There are some proposed improvements to Central, but they are not in the five-year CIP window, right?
The improvements that are noted, and this kind of came out of the traffic study, I think Karen had a map there that kind of schematically showed, you know, as you step through the development, the first phase requires a right turn, a westbound right turn into it. Different phases require different additions to Central, and those are all spelled out. So, and those improvements are paid for by this development.
I'm with you on that, but in the CIP, there is a proposed central, like 48th to Shiloh in future years connection, right?
I would have to look at that. I believe so.
Would you mind? Because I'd like to ask a few questions about that when I get my turn back. And then the traffic study that you're talking about, that's already been conducted, is that available to the public?
Yes.
Okay, where can they find it?
Our office.
Oh, okay, it's not published online.
And I also think it was submitted with the development, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
And Mac, while we've got you, if you could just go back to 18 again, because that was a little confusing, I just want to make sure, I've got a simple summary. So that's the one right above that with the roads. So it's a correct statement, isn't it, that if Phase One, Phase Two were quickly built out, there'd be two ways in and out of this subdivision or this area, one south to Central and the other north up to Broadwater, because the developer would have to build half a right-of-way of Broadwater, but that would be a legal access in and out. But those would be the only two connections upon construction of Phase One and Phase Two. Is that a correct summary? Okay.
And if I could just add, I guess just to clarify on this map, maybe partly to council member Owen's question, what we're showing here is where there are right-of-ways. There's a difference in, as the, as the city engineer, Mr. Focussen, is saying, that there's physical, actually built roads, and then there's right-of-way that's there for the future construction of roads. And so a lot of what you're seeing here, especially at Broadwater, 44th, 46th, is the future right-of-ways where the roads could be built. So it's not that ultimately that's what would happen, but yes, they're not physically getting constructed all, you know, now. So just wanted to make sure you're clear.
Thank you for that clarification. I also should have said, although you could get to Broadwater, the only access, once you get to Broadwater, is to the west, not to the east from that angle. More questions? Councilor McKenney?
Mac, you just said that Bluegrass, that the subdivision would have to approve of going across through Bluegrass, correct?
What I stated was...
The Cloverleaf.
What I stated was that basically with this development being completed, there wouldn't be a physical connection to that road-to-road, if you will, and that if the city council or Cloverleaf or someone else, there needs to be a catalyst for that to be done, and that could be done by SID or somebody builds that for some reason, but at this point, we didn't have that as a requirement.
Who has to give permission to do that? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
The city council for the south side, Cloverleaf is in the county, so perhaps the city, you know, to build that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Further questions? Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Neese?
Thanks, Mac. I have another question for you. I think what we're trying to get at is we're expecting to hear from a bunch of people who are very concerned about having a bunch of cars dumped in their neighborhood. So I just want to reiterate this again, because I haven't driven this. This is closed off currently, and it would only open up going up into that subdivision with some sort of future action from a local government entity.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not, approving an annexation doesn't automatically trigger that or anything like that. It would still have to come back to council at some point in the future.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and again, just to clarify, they're in the county, so we don't have any jurisdiction over that property right now.
Local government entities.
I recognize Councilwoman Neese and Councilor Ruppsis. Councilwoman Neese?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Great. Okay. So just to clarify, because I'm a little confused on what's going on in Broadwater north of this property, which under Phase Two, they would build the, their half of Broadwater, correct? Well, that's not a complete road, so who builds the other half of the road?
So someone in the future, either, I could see it happening in a couple of ways. One might be, let's say Cloverleaf came into the city, then that would be an SID or something for that, potentially in the future. Let's say all the right-of-way was collected all the way out to Shiloh. Maybe that's a city capital improvements plan. There's many mechanisms to do that, but those are the two.
Until that happens, that Broadwater won't really be a passable road because it's only half-developed.
It'll be, when we say a half-street, we generally do curb plus 30 feet that allows two ways to travel, so it'll be an unfinished two-way street.
Unfinished four-way street, where the first two lanes are going to be on the south side, and then the other two lanes undeveloped.
So that fire vehicles can travel on that, et cetera. So it's, it's not a, it's more than a half-street.
Okay. And then I did have another question for Wyeth, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead.
So Wyeth, the, what we're approving tonight is the annexation for the future, as I understand, correct? I'm sorry, not the annexation, we're approving the zoning for the future.
So councilmember Neese and mayor and council, what you're, so you've got a zoning, basically the master plan layout of the whole property for zoning?
So this is what we're approving, but this is, what we're looking at is it's a single zone, and then N2 and NX1 in the northern half of the property. But in, based upon what I'm hearing tonight, a lot of this stuff won't be developed for many, many, 2031, I think is the deadline, but so quite a ways out. By that time, we'll have our new map in place. As far as what options, because not every land is going to have a single zone anymore, it's going to have a multiple choices that the developer can choose and go to the planning department and say, hey, I'd like to change the zone from N2 or NX1 to, you know, N3 or NX, or say me, N1, or maybe to the NX1 could go to N2 or N3. Now, you would have to approve that, but wouldn't have to come back to city council. And so, is, so when we're approving zoning for the future like this, and today, I'm assuming they're probably, I don't know if this developer's planning on building the whole thing out, or if they're only going to build the residential portion at the N2 and then try and sell off the high density to let someone else who's more specialized, because sometimes developers are more specialized than others. And so when they do that, and that developer buys that land, they're going to come to you and say, hey, listen, I don't like the NX1, I want to do NX2, which is much higher density. And so when we are proving this, because we've got these numbers of density per acre that we're kind of proving for this whole thing, is there anything in, that we do as far as tie this land to a density factor that can't be changed by administration appeal when they want to change and up the zoning?
Councilmember Neese and mayor and council, I'll probably defer to Gina a little bit here, but my understanding is that if you approve this tonight, if this gets annexed with a phased annexation, and it gets zoned with a zoning master plan with the first portion coming in the city and being zoned, even though you would, it would come back to you for the second portion to have the resolution for the annexation, or excuse me, the resolution for the zoning to be determined, we would be working off what this master plan. We would not, if someone came in and decided, and wanted to do something different, we would have to go back to these documents first and say, wait, is that even, can you even do that, which I'm not sure you could, because we would be following what has been agreed to here. So I don't think part of what your scenario was of, you know, oh, it changes and they come in later, was something else. We would have to go to these documents and what was approved and what's on the docket, basically based on this, and we wouldn't be able to, yeah, we wouldn't be able to just go to a different version.
So that multiple options that they can choose from on the zoning map that we're building now would not impact the single-zone use now?
The, it wouldn't impact the zonings, the three zonings, or four, I guess, that are proposed here, that, yeah, correct, because we're following what has been approved and adopted here.
Great, thank you.
So Wyeth, just to clarify that, what you're saying is both parties are bound by this master plan, zoning master plan in the future?
That is my understanding, yeah, and that's how we're carrying the other ones that have gone the same route, yes.
Okay. I guess Councilmember Boyett, right? I hadn't recognized anybody else, right? It's Councilmember Boyett.
So Wyeth, I'd asked you earlier if we could change the zoning, and you said no, which I understand, but in this case, there's five different zoning areas. Can we, do we have the ability as the council to say, no, I like the five of them, but I just want to move them around a little bit to different locations on the same property? Yes, sir, I mean, just for the sake of everybody.
Yes, well, so councilmember Boyett and mayor and council, no, I, again, don't think that that could be done tonight in the middle of the, yeah, with what's been proposed.
Just wanted to make sure of that.
Councilor Ruppsis, had you, did you have your hand up earlier? Did I? Okay. Okay, further, Councilmember Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. Wyeth, I have a couple of questions regarding the sort of analysis we were provided in the staff memo. I think I've seen some comments, some of the public comments that have come in expressing concern that folks in this development might be using nearby private parks. Can you talk a little bit about whether or not staff looked at that and the nature of those concerns and?
Councilmember Owen and mayor and council, no, we didn't look into specifically, I guess, uses of parks and other developments, and actually defining, determining which ones, there are public parks, there are private parks with public easements that allow public access. So we would have to drill into that and find out the conditions in any adjacent subdivision about what's actually allowed.
Okay, so we don't know, as we sit here right now, whether there are private parks, whether the parks that exist, even if privately supported, have public access rights. We don't have any of that information in front of us.
No, not at this time. I couldn't tell you the details on each of those.
Okay. How, you know, we always cite our very, our pretty outdated growth plan and our very outdated neighborhood plans, but there is a West End neighborhood plan under development. How does this fit into what you've seen in the drafts of the West End neighborhood plan?
Councilmember Owen and mayor and council, given that what we're seeing out here in the transition of city to county, which is obviously a big stressor that we're going to continue to have for years to come, but with what we see both in the current plan and what's being looked at for the future, I would say that this type of development in this location is in alignment with those expectations overall. I mean, you're talking about in this case, in this location along Central, obviously the commercial, having some commercial on the frontage of Central, which is in alignment currently with what we look at in terms of areas where you have services for neighborhoods, et cetera. But also, when you're talking about basically two-family attached units, duplexes for the most part, and some fourplexes in a couple of areas, that actually, yeah, is actually in my estimation, when you're kind of on the lower end of some of the residential development expectations that we'll see in different parts of the community, but in terms of how that fits in with what's there now and the county adjacent, yeah, it fits in pretty well.
So one of the things, we sort of dance around this a lot when we talk about development in this part of town, but we don't squarely hit it, and I think we need to squarely hit it, given that we're almost to the end of the year, is the current analysis underway of the aquifer in this part of town, the work that the Bureau of Mines and DEQ is doing. We don't talk about that here. In fact, we never talk about it when we talk about development on this end of town, but I know you're following it. I would like an update. I would like to know how it factors into your analysis, how you would recommend we as council think about that.
So briefly, tonight, councilmember Owen and mayor and council, you're correct, we are waiting and also trying to, I guess, well, not I guess, to provide more information to the Bureau of Mines. They're close to having their model complete. We had a meeting actually just a few weeks ago with them, and they weren't as far along as we actually thought they were, but they did ask us for more information regarding development activity in this area, in the county and the city, so we're sharing more of that with them. Our anticipated, my plan with that was, and I thought we were closer to it, honestly, you know, but we'll get there, was to have, when we do have that model and we do have all their results complete, to do a joint meeting with city council, county commissioners, and planning board, literally, to go through the whole thing, because that's really the best way to have everyone hear it, understand, ask questions, because, yeah, I think ultimately there's going to be impacts in the future. DNRC is a big player in this too, because they're reviewing county developments right now. So I, we're hoping, and I don't want to say exactly, because we thought we were closer, but I think we're hoping early 2026, we're going to have that to share.
Oh, I had thought we'd see it before the end of this year.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I agree.
Okay. Do you at this point anticipate the potential of a development moratorium on the West End?
Councilmember Owen and mayor and council, I don't know. I think it's going to be, that's where we've got to see how that information is going to be used by like the state to do, especially the county development. We know that nitrogen levels are going up, which is, which affects the septic permitting. We know some of the wells are going down, which affects the water, so I think there's a lot of things going on there, but I don't know at this point, and we're as interested in anyone as how the state is going to start to address it when they get that information.
But nothing in your conversations with the state so far has led you to have concerns about this development?
About the development tonight we're talking about? No, no, I mean, not within the city on water and city water and sewer, no.
Okay. And then, Mayor, I did, I was hoping to get a follow-up from Mac on what's in the CIP, if he's had a chance to look, because I'd like to understand what the potential source of the funding is for that project and how we might be able to move it up. source of the funding is for that project and how we might be able to move it up if necessary. If we're going to dump a bunch of traffic onto Central, I'd like to understand our capacity to move that out year project up.
I'm sure, Councilmember Owen, great question, Debbie and I just looked, that is in our, our sort of long-term list of potential projects, it's obviously not in the five-year plan.
Right.
Uh, the way we would advance that would be similar to what we do with all the other projects that are in the CIP, and that's that multi, uh, we have, we have a tool, it's called MODA, acronym slipping me right now, but we look at all sorts of things like safety, traffic, there, there's 10 or 15 different elements, and we rank those. Obviously, if some of the elements on Central start to elevate themselves, we would, we would do that like another project and, and prioritize those.
I, I guess, Mac, what I'm specifically trying to understand is what's the potential source of funding and what might have to be the trade-offs if we were to put that in the five-year window?
Oh, in, in the current five-year plan?
Correct.
Um, you, we would simply have to, I, I guess.
Is it a gas tax project, is it a?
Probably a gas tax primarily.
Thanks.
Hey, Mac, while we've got you on that topic, legally, we can only tag the developer for their roughly proportional costs in contributing to traffic problems, for example. Once they're part of our community and, and as part of the subdivision process, for example. However, we can tag them for whatever we want to as part of the annexation process. If they don't want to come into our party, they don't have to, and we don't have to accept them, we don't have to annex them. So my question is for you, as part of annexation, is there any condition that we might want to add as a condition of annexation that would be really important to make this project work for the community? And that we'd be willing to let the developer walk away if they didn't contribute to that degree? And here I'm thinking finishing off Broadwater as more than a half-street. Personally, I'm not, I don't have anything in mind, I, I, I'm not advocating for that, but I just want to raise the question as a reminder kind of to council, that we have an opportunity with annexation that we will not have later with subdivision process when we are limited by that rule of rough proportionality. We're still in the annexation world, so is there anything that we should be asking of this developer as a condition to annexation? That we're, that we're not currently?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I think we did a, based on the traffic analysis, I think we did a pretty thorough analysis and, and looking at the, there's various turn lanes and contribution to the signal, I, I would have to start to reach pretty, um, I don't, I would have to have a lot of bases for starting to reach more than what we have currently.
Okay, I just.
So I think in summary, no.
If you were anxious to get something, I, I was going to say, speak now or forever hold your peace, so. Uh, okay, other questions for Mac, and then we'll try to move to, we'll give the developer, their agent, opportunity to comment on anything they've heard, and we'll move to a public hearing, so, Councilmember Kennedy?
I'm glad you brought up, Mayor, the condition for annexation. Can we have a condition for annexation that they would have to remove the NX one in the north section of this property? Can we have that as a condition for, I don't know if it's you, Wyatt, or if it's Gina?
Um, it's going to mostly be Gina, but I would, I would say no, you cannot do that because it's zoning and, or that's not within any purview of the annexation, but I, but I'll defer to Gina.
The, the real reason I ask that is, is because if you zone it this way, and, you know, we've talked about the roadway, we've talked about all of that, but if you annex it with this in there, and it only is half built, and someone acquires that property later, they can put in to the NX one right away. So, I have a concern on that, and so that's why I'm asking, as a condition for annexation, can we remove that?
Councilmember Kennedy, Mayor and Council, I would certainly like to look at that issue closer, but it is my, I, I, again, don't like to give legal opinions on the fly, but it is my initial reaction that, given that that is their request, it's part of their application, that you could not remove that as part of annexation, I, I mean, you could, it's, annexation is within your discretion, so if you do not like the application, you don't want to annex this property, council does not have to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good, um, we've had good back and forth here, the developer just is present and, or the developer's agent. Taylor, you've heard some comments, I just want to give you an opportunity to make whatever presentation you want and also comment on anything you've heard before we open up for a public hearing.
Definitely, thank you, Mayor and Council. Obviously, there's been quite a bit of discussion, so I'll try to hit on the majority of the points and, and comments that have been made, but would be happy to answer any questions after we get through it, I guess, just based on recency and, and Councilmember Kennedy's comment, so the NX one is proposed both at the north end of the development, adjacent to Broadwater, as well as just north of the commercial uses on the south side. From a planning perspective, and going back to one of the slides that Karen had, in 10 years, 15 years, we, we don't know when, but Broadwater is eventually going to be connected through over to Shiloh Road. When that happens, from 48th to Shiloh Road, Broadwater is going to be a very busy thoroughfare. So it, it wasn't happenstance that we selected NX one to be placed there along Broadwater Avenue, it is going to be a busy road, and from a planning perspective, it makes most sense to have a higher, and I don't want to say high-density housing, because it's one to four dwelling units, zone district adjacent to a collector roadway like that. Just to give a little background on why that zone district is placed there. Further to that, we are following the PND process for this. As part of that process, you can only have one zone district go up to 88% of the overarching plan. If you were to remove that NX one zone district, the N two would exceed 88% of the overarching plan, with the point there being that the vast majority of this zoning application is N two. It's a single-family zone district that allows for up to duplexes, which is also a great segue into any residential zone district proposed within the city, the state right now, would allow for duplexes. I realize that, you know, adjacent to this development, there's County N four, County RR one, County RR three, a lot of single-family zone districts that are being, that have single-family homes on them. With that being said, all of those zone districts could also have duplexes on them right now, per state law. So, so we have proposed N two with, with the understanding and the, and the desire to be transparent with what we are planning with this development. We could have selected N three, N one, other city zone districts that only allow for single-family houses, but our client and, and their intent with this development is to build duplex living units. As was noted on a couple of the slides, the anticipated density with this development is about seven and a half units per acre. At that rate, it is actually lower than what the 2016 growth policy calls for in this area. In the 2016 growth policy, it calls for this area to be medium-density housing, which would be nine dwelling units per acre. Which, you know, we, we want to, we've prepared this to fall in line with the growth policy, as well as the West, West Village Neighborhood Plan, which is being prepared, which also points to this style or this type of zone district being put in this location. In terms of, you know, this property in, in particular, and, you know, the, our, our client, this property has been on the market for two and a half years. I realize that there are other single-family home developers that, you know, potential neighbors or, or members of the public would prefer to see develop this piece of ground, it has been on the, the market for two and a half years, and nobody has been able to make it pencil out with single-family homes. That goes to not just the cost of housing right now, but also the cost of services when you're pulling city services, city water, city sewer, city storm through a development. It does not pencil out and be an affordable housing option for people that would be looking to purchase those homes. To, to the, to that point, the city has already made a significant investment in serving this area and ensuring that it is brought into the city. Last summer, water line was extended down Central Avenue to serve Clearwater and 44th Street, which has a very similar zone, zoning plan on the south side of Central. Two years ago, sewer was extended up Monad Drain and up through Clearwater and 44th. This will be a continuation of that investment that the city has made, pulling 24-inch waterline up the middle of the property, with the intent that in the future, that would connect to Grand Avenue and loop the city's water supply. In terms of, when, uh, Mayor Cole is, in terms of the proportionality, I appreciate that there weren't any additional items added on as for proportionality. I think it would be unfair to a single developer when you've got other developments that just got annexed in to the south, to the southeast, that would not have had unproportional requirements put on them, and then the next person just to the north does have that. So, appreciate the consideration, but also appreciate a fair, fair discussion amongst developments. I would like to note that N two has a height requirement, or a height, maximum height allowance of 27 feet, which is two stories. Our client and the developer of this does typically build single-story residential units, and has no intention of building two, two-story units in this development. With that, I would be open for any questions, and we'll just leave it with, we do feel that this is the highest and best use of this land.
Very much, questions, Councilmembers, Boyett, Councilmember Rupesas?
I noticed you have two NX ones, one on the north and one on the south, which is to give you the percentage, could you not take the north and put it with the south, and that way you'd still have the same amount, and that would guarantee that only duplexes would be built on the north side? Just a question.
Yep, yeah, and I would just go back to, you know, thinking of this in 10, 15, 20 years, Broadwater is eventually going to connect through to Shiloh. Right now, the only people that would be using this section of Broadwater would be this development, as well as Sundance, but into the future, Broadwater will be a busy street. And, while I understand the sentiment of not desiring fourplexes instead of duplexes in that area, the intent is to build duplexes there.
The only trouble is, we don't know that five years from now, that's the main concern.
Yeah, and I guess I would just lean on the, the maximum that would be there is a fourplex. This is, we're not, we're not proposing or considering NX two, which would be an eight-plex, NX three, which would be a much higher-density residential zone district. We, we have tried to be cognizant of this roundings, whether, whether, you know, that's agreed with or not, we have tried to be cognizant, as, as you could see from the slide that showed the, the densities of different developments around here. You know, we're, we're proposing a density that's actually less than the growth policy, it is higher than the adjacent developments and properties, however, I would just say that those are county properties, which tend to have a much different development pattern than a city property would, which goes to the interface of the city and the county as we, as Wyatt alluded to, as the city grows, there will be more and more instances where there's connection between county and city properties.
Would you be, would you agree, though? Would, could, could you think about moving, having N two up there instead of the NX one?
We definitely could, I, I'd be curious as to what the, the formal process of that would need to be, but that would also go to dropping us below, or above 88% for that.
Yeah, and staff can talk about the process, but I assume it means withdrawing the current proposal and amending it, and I don't know how far back in the process you've got to go with new meetings, but Wyatt, could you comment? That was a question, what that process would look like to make a change, that kind of change or any change?
So, Mayor and Council, and I'll defer to Karen or Hannah, make sure I'm on track, but if, yes, I think you're, the last part of what you said, so to change it, as you're describing, you would, the applicant and the owner would have to go back and basically start over again, you, you would, I guess, yeah, I don't know how far to get into this right now, I, they would, they would need to go back and, and start with a new application, new request, and, and go through the process if you're going to change it. So, again, kind of what I said earlier, that's still the situation, if you're going to start changing where zonings are and adjusting districts and such.
And I guess, given, if I may, Mayor and Council, to that, to that point, our client and developer intends to start construction on this next year. This process takes two and a half, three months at a minimum, which would really delay that ability to start next year if we don't even know if we would be annexed until March. So, given that, I would refrain from desiring to change that.
Councilmember Rupesas?
Thank you, Mayor, Taylor, just to, I had heard that these are going, that the developer is the developer of the Happy Homes complexes, and it's going to be, this complex is going to be essentially just like what's down off Shiloh by Costco now, is that an accurate representation on what they're, who that is and what they're planning on to build?
It'd be a fairly similar representation, yeah.
Um, and Wyatt, the, I know we have a prohibition against N one, N two, N three on arterials, but that wouldn't count as, Broadwater here would be a collector, right?
Councilmember Rupesas, St. Mary and Council, correct, yeah, it, it, yeah, it doesn't, that's not the same criteria that would apply.
It wouldn't have the prohibition.
Correct. It's just that, as Mr. Kasparnik mentioned earlier, I mean, Broadwater as a collector getting, is going to be busier, and so that's the reason, part of the reason.
Thank you.
Taylor, if I can ask you a question and then to make a comment, the, the question, I guess, is, you don't have a crystal ball, we know that, but if this NX two, or I'm sorry, the NX one continues on that north strip, when would, might you actually build that out? You, I know you would want to start the project next year, but that's phase one, this is in phase two, you can't give us a date, obviously, but the circumstances would be when Broadwater is built out and is busy, is that, I, I'm thinking it might be many years down the line.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously, in the annexation agreement, we've got 2031 lined out for phase two, a lot of that would be market-dependent, I would say, but typically, our, our client is building a project a year, you know, potentially a project or two a year, this is not the only property that they have, so typically, they're moving from one portion of town to another, back to that portion of town. So I think the 2030, 2031 timeframe is a reasonable estimation as far as when that would be.
Okay, and then the comment is, the developer constructed the buildings at the bottom of Shiloh, below the shelf, across from the zoo, or north of the zoo and across from Costco, also the basketball-themed units south of King Avenue at about 44th. My comment is, in my opinion, those are aesthetically lacking, and you're not an architect, you're not the developer, you're not even a painter, but I would ask that if this thing does go through, that the, the message be communicated that there's value to variety, even if you, they have to be consistency to save money, is there some way to make them look more individualized than what they do now, which is reminiscent of Soviet Russia, in my opinion? But, so, but, I'm getting into the merits and we haven't had any public comments, so I didn't need to do that. You can comment if, on anything else, and we'll see if there's any other question, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even look left. Councilmember Neese, Councilmember Rowan?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know if the developer plans on building all the different phases and all the different types of property, the CMU one, the NX one, I mean, or is he planning on selling those properties off to someone else to develop?
Thank you, Councilmember Neese, so the, the developer would most likely be building all of the residential aspects himself, the commercial units, he doesn't necessarily have any. The commercial units, he doesn't necessarily have any, um, distinct plans for at this point. He has talked about potentially building a gym, uh, fitness facility on, on a portion of that that would largely serve, you know, both his development or the, or the residential to the north as well as the community. But that's kind of pie in the sky at this point.
The N two and NX one is something he would, he would develop himself.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. And I would just note, I mean, back to the aesthetic standpoint, I, I realize that, um, you know, our, our client has found a very particular niche in, in what they build. That, that is balanced with trying to keep those units affordable for residents of Billings. They are not going to have granite finishes. They are not going to have rose gold fixtures. We are, they are in the, in the business of providing quality housing for their tenants at a reasonable price. So I would just add that, um, to the previous statement.
You're entitled. Councilmember, uh, Owen?
Taylor, you had the neighborhood meeting about two months ago, yeah?
Correct.
In that time, what have you done to address the neighborhood concerns? You've heard them. I don't think there's been anything sort of late breaking because they're certainly consistent with what I've seen over the last. What efforts have been made to try to alleviate neighborhood concerns, respond to them, help folks understand? Tell me what's transpired between September and tonight.
Yeah. So I mean, uh, obviously as we get comments filtering in to ourselves, trying to respond to those, keep everybody informed as far as what, what the process is, um, when they can show up, have their voices be heard. Attended the West End Task Force meeting last Tuesday, um, presented on it. I think there was only one, uh, resident from, from the surrounding neighborhoods that attended that. We're really just trying to provide the information that we have for this.
Okay. I just want to follow up. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I specifically asked if you'd made any changes to address neighborhood concerns. Have there been any changes between the neighborhood meeting based on the concerns you heard that night and what we're looking at right now?
We have not.
Okay.
Uh, no. And I would, I would say, I mean, I, I understand the, the concerns and the requests of the adjacent neighbors, but I think, you know, uh, Commissioner Brooks at the zoning commission said it best. I can understand and sympathize with the, with the neighbors and comments that are being made, but as far as looking at, you know, growth of the city and applications like this, there's a lot of people that are in the city that are not at this meeting that would agree with or, or view this application as being great. So, um, or directly in line with the growth policy, directly in line with the West Billings neighborhood plan that the community as a whole are providing feedback to. So.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, very good. Uh, we'll open it up for public, uh, if they're, uh, before we do that, uh, so last round, Councilmember Shaw.
I was just going to ask, could we take a quick break? It's after seven thirty. I'm just anticipating there's going to be a lot of public comments.
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd lost track of time once, when you're having fun, you know, it's just, so we normally take a break at seven thirty. So let's do that. We'll take a break. We'll come back. We'll have public, uh, uh, comment and then we'll kick it back to council. So, um, it's, uh, seven forty-eight. We'll be back, uh, uh, at seven fifty-five. Start at seven fifty-five. Okay, we'll, uh, reconvene here. Uh, we'll, I'll lay out some preliminaries. And with that, I think that'll probably give Councilmember Neese time to, uh, uh, join us again. I want to make sure that he's present before we hear any, uh, uh, public comments. So, um, this is then a public hearing and so we'll open it up in just a minute, uh, for members of the public to comment as they feel fit. Few ground rules. One is, uh, time limits. You'll see a, a timer on the screen, a countdown. We just asked that you keep your comments two, three minutes and tell us your name and address. Also, I'd ask the crowd to refrain from clapping and, uh, verbal expressions, just because once that starts, we really, it's very difficult to control. It's just not fair. It takes away from the fairness of the, uh, event. And also I just wanted to thank everybody for your willingness to come out tonight. And, uh, if this is your first time seeing the new Billings City Hall, welcome, uh, to that as well. So, um, with that, uh, this is a public hearing. Often what happens when we have a lot of people in attendance, comments become redundant. So we just ask that if someone's already said something, uh, and you want to weigh in, just sort of make it very quick or say, I agree with so and so. If they're also representatives of the group, you might want to have them come up first. So we can be sure to get the, the broadest, uh, uh, set of input, um, and then save some of the later comments later. And also if somebody wants to have a little poll and ask, uh, for people to raise their hands, you know, who's in opposition, who's in favor, um, feel free to do that as well as a way to have broader input. So, um, why don't we start? And again, uh, let's make a little line so there's not a delay as we wait for people to, uh, come forward. Um, that way we also can tell how many people are ready to make comments. So please, Susan.
Good evening. I'm Susan Sullivan. I have lived in the Cloverleaf Meadows subdivision for thirty-three years. And I'm here to add a new component to home market valuation. So tonight we have heard many, many uncertainties. I've heard the word, I think. I've heard the word, to my understanding. I've heard we're in preliminary discussions. So on and so forth. Nothing affects market home valuations more than market uncertainty. And council members, we have produced market uncertainty tonight. I brought along with me my property tax bill. My property taxes are just under fourteen thousand dollars. I have lived in this home in Cloverleaf for twenty-six years. It's not a brand new home. My property taxes went up twenty-four point six seven percent from last year. I didn't file a petition to complain. I didn't complain. I am happy to support the community with this type of property tax. So because of market uncertainty, which we have created tonight, not only in the forty-nine homes in Cloverleaf. If my property taxes went up twenty-five percent, can they come down twenty-five percent? You take that number and you multiply it by the forty-nine homes in Cloverleaf. Go to the north. There's fifty homes there. There's a hundred homes there. Go to the west. There's eighty homes for sure. There's a hundred homes. There's two hundred homes. If you can knock my property value down by twenty-five percent and you take that number and you multiply it by a thousand homes, because you've just produced market home price uncertainty. Take your calculators out. If you have a, I'm just using an example. A thousand homes that are affected by this market uncertainty on the west end. And let's say those homes drop by a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That number is one hundred and twenty-five million dollars of lost valuation that you've created. Do you think this property that's going to be annexed or you're talking about is going to produce a hundred and twenty-five million dollars? Look what you, look what you've lost in property valuations, what you've lost in entities. My, my little, um, property real estate tax, there's thirty-nine entities that are affected here. And I loved your comment when we opened the meeting, when you opened the meeting, to leave this community better than I found it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello, Mayor and, uh, council people. Uh, Steve Zabawa, Eight Ten Bluegrass Place. Uh, Steve Zabawa, oh, there you go. Uh, Eight Ten Bluegrass Place. Uh, thank you, Mayor and, uh, council people. In my opinion, this is, uh, just a jam session. Someone's come with a very high offer on a piece of property from out of state investors that are going to be buying the paper on this deal when all the rental units are filled up in here. And they're trying to, uh, run a deal through that does not make any sense. Because if you go to the west, the density is very low, even lower if you go to the north. And then if you, the only thing that came in this appraisal that they basically came out with to somehow justify this high density deal is to take units that are basically emptying out on King Avenue. And, uh, with stocks got his homes on over there is, uh, three-story high-rise and so forth. And that's what they're trying to throw into this one. Well, if you go around this neighborhood of this fifty acres, there's nothing like this. Well, if you go around this neighborhood of this 50 acres, there's nothing like this next to it. Nothing. You're, you're putting in a very high-density, happy home. The only person that I think is going to be happy on this program, based on the discussion at the first meeting that we went to and the second meeting, is Ken Conkel and the, and the barbers. They are trying to jam a deal that doesn't make sense at this piece of location. I'd love the idea of having more affordable housing, but it's not, it's, it's going to affect how the whole thing gets affected, like my wife was just mentioning. So, you know, when they, they built the Costco deal, there are no million-dollar homes or half-a-million-dollar homes anywhere close to that. It's all empty land around there. So when they picked out a good piece of property, they put it in there and that's, it makes a lot of sense. And it works. They built it behind Montana Sapphire, same exact thing. There were nothing there except for commercial properties. They empty out on four-lane roads with good cul-de-sacs and roundabouts and so forth. Nothing like what we're talking about here. Everything you talk about on Broadwater, there's nothing ready to go on Broadwater. There's nothing on 44th. There's nothing on 46th. There's nothing on Central. There's nothing on 48th. There's nothing but a lot of traffic and you're going to empty out, you know, if you have 350, 450 residences, times, say, three cars per resident, you know, as far as each one of those duplexes, add up the car traffic. It's anywhere from 700 to 1,000 more vehicles emptying out, running here, running there, going to whatever. So I really think that's a problem. There's a simple solution here. There's developers that want this property, but they want it like, with an N4, which is more compatible for this particular piece of property. This is not compatible. That's the kind of key secret. It's, it's very disingenuous as far as how they calculated that this is just an average, like seven is going to be good, when everything around it is like one home per acre, two homes per acre, maybe three homes per acre, maybe four. But anyway, so you get the picture. So I'm in favor of not approving this and I think they need to go back to the drawing board and actually talk to the neighbors.
Very good. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kelsey Ryder. I live at 1135 Bluegrass Drive East. And we are here to collectively represent the mothers and children of the neighborhood. So I'm going to read a statement. Members of the city council, thank you for your time and consideration in hearing our thoughts tonight. We are here to express our objection to the proposed zoning plan number 1074. We stand tonight as mothers and children to show and argue this proposed zoning change affects not only our children, but our children's children. We stand tonight to represent other voices that need to be seen and heard. Zone change 1074 does not comply with Billings Zone Change Criteria, specifically Section 8, which states, "Does the new zoning consider the character of the district and the peculiar sustainability of the property for the particular uses?" The neighborhoods surrounding the proposed area to be developed are all single-family neighborhoods. The proposed zone change would not match the character of the surrounding district. While we are not against development, in fact, quite the opposite, we embrace and are welcome change. However, we are for thoughtful and planned change, not haphazard planning. The two areas that have potential for current concerns specific to our current stage in life, as we see them, include the following. Number one, an increase in the number of vehicles potentially using the surrounding neighborhoods as thoroughfares. And two, school issues. As for the first item, an increase in number of vehicles. The roads surrounding the proposed development do not offer the infrastructure to support an increase in traffic demand. The Department of Motor Vehicles for the state of Montana states that average household in Yellowstone County owns 1.8 cars. At the minimum, the proposed zone change states that there will be 350 units. This means at minimum, there will be an additional 630 cars within our direct vicinity. This is the minimum number. We have witnessed multiple accidents along Grand and Central when driving to and from our homes. The single-lane highways are insufficient to handle this added stress on the roads. As far as the second item is concerned, if part of the plan in the city of Billings is to make it a more walkable city, the fact that our children are zoned for a school that is three miles away with no active building of at least one new entry, elementary school does not lend well to being a walkable city. And yet, we want to add potentially 350 more units where families can live. Where are all these children going to attend school? This isn't to mention the current maintenance needed to so desperately in our already existing schools, as is, as is exhibited by our daughter using a restroom with a shower curtain for a door stall. These are just a few of our concerns if this change, if this zones change occurs. We stand with our neighbors and support the other concerns that they have addressed tonight. We ask, why not zone this area for a desperately needed elementary school? If not, at the very least, why not zone it for no multiple-family housing than duplexes? Again, we are not against change or development. We just want the development to consider the character of the surrounding areas. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Very good. Thank you.
Katie Stanley. I'm at 1150 Bluegrass Drive West. I am echoing a lot of what Kelsey mentioned, but I did just want to let, I mean, I've been here for almost three hours with these kids and I am their advocate. And I need to let you guys know that this development is going to affect them. That's why I made them sit here for three hours and they're going to go home right after this and get in bed. This is, this is important. And I, I really, I do appreciate the opportunity that we have to talk to you guys. We moved to Cloverleaf just this spring and it's been great. The kids are riding their bikes around. They go to the neighborhood, the neighbors, they go to the park. They are, they're all over that road. But with that increased traffic, I am truly concerned. This guy right here, I'm saying, don't go in the road, even now. He just does it, you know? It's, it's difficult and I'm very concerned that he's going to run out, he's going to ride his bike out there and there's going to be that much, that many more cars coming through. And then in addition to that, these two are at Metalark Elementary, just had parent-teacher conference with her teacher yesterday, or no, on Friday. She was telling me she's maxed out. Her, there's four fourth-grade classes and she is at, she's, her classroom is maxed out. How are these additional children, where are these additional children going to go? And it's hard to see that many more, I mean, I, I love that we're growing, but we need to be able to, to support that. For these reasons, I ask you to please deny the zone change 1074. I do respect that we need to, things are going to change and things are going to develop, but I would just ask that we think about these things, how they're going to affect what currently, and if we can do them, not haphazardly, really thoughtfully. And I just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your patience. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council for listening to me. I'm not very comfortable doing this, but I'm here. I'd like to mention that, looking over the paperwork that I was able to obtain online, I noticed that Sundance has 2.2 families per acre and the proposed unit is going to be six, development is going to be 6.67 to 7.5 families per acre. That's a three-to-one increase in population density. We already have a very dangerous street on Sun, on Central at Sundance, where we go in and out of our HOA area at, at rush hours. It's very bad. The stops, stoplights down on 48th are good, but the staging of traffic is just horrible between the two directions. Adding more to this area is really crazy, but it's development, it's the future. I just would really like to see the density maintain something more similar to the housing that is there. I've been in this home for a little over a year. I come from San Fernando Valley, Los Angeles, next to Northridge. And the reason for moving here was, my wife got the opportunity to change occupations, not occupations, but to change locations. And I retired recently, so why not? My sister lives up here and we're enjoying the wonders of Montana. And I've been coming here for years and is just grateful to be here now. Seeing this development scares me. There's four complexes against our backyards. Really like to avoid that. Sorry, it's just, just me. My other concern is, what kind of businesses? Is it possible we can see a casino or other nightclubs coming on our strip in front? I'd sure like to avoid that. I noticed that the population density, they're saying it's, it's low level, but it's because it's 8.1 housings per acre is what they're proposing and mid-level density is just at 8.5. It's very close. It should be considered that in the consideration of the density of this area, we just don't have that and we really don't want it. It affects our housing prices. It affects our quality of living, our quietness of neighborhoods and the reason why we moved here. And I'm speaking for most of the people I spoke to in our HOA. We're, we're just kind of shocked. We'd much rather see something similar density and drive forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, I apologize. Did we get your name? Denise? No, we didn't. Willard Berry. Willard Berry. Thank you very much.
City council members, Mayor Cole, friends, neighbors, good evening. My name is Tony Gafki. I'm a resident at 4602 Leahona Lane, Billings, Montana, 59106. I'm here on behalf of Sundance subdivision to express our opposition to Barber Farm zoning request 1074. Our subdivision is united in this op, in this position and I'll keep my comments clear and concise. In 2016, the city of Billings adopted its 10 growth guidelines, planning objectives meant to guide decisions like this one before us tonight. In the materials we shared before this meeting, which I trust you were able to go through and was very concise on point and counterpoint to the developer's proposal, we outlined zoning request 1074 and how it conflicts with several of these guidelines. For time today, I'll focus on just two critical objectives. Objective seven, does the zoning promote compatible urban growth? Objective eight, does the zoning respect the character of the surrounding district and the suitability of the property for its intended use? In our view, both objectives show the current plan is incompatible. Aerial maps, as we've seen, show Barber Farms is bordered on three sides by established N3 and N4 neighborhoods, Cloverleaf Meadows, Sundance subdivision, and Shiloh Estates. Sundance borders directly to the west with 125 lots averaging about one-third of an acre. By contrast, Barber Farms is proposed to include at least 350 rental units on a similar-sized parcel, nearly triple, has been brought forward tonight, nearly triple the density of Sundance with even greater contrast to Cloverleaf and Shiloh Estates. So takeaway is very clear, very clear to me and I believe should be clear to this room. As currently proposed, the Barber Farms would stand out as a high-density rental island development. Incompatible, incongruent, inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. It does not transition. It does not blend. It isolates itself in both form and density. So we're not opposed to growth. We understand this land will be developed. Our request is that you, the city council, require performance engineering to create a plan that fits the area and enhances it. One proposal, one proposed approach is N3 single-family lots along the perimeter, transitioning inward to higher-density N2 zoning. This creates a natural, thoughtful progression, allowing the development to feel like a continuation of the community, rather than a dense rental enclave next to an established owner-occupied homes. This would be well-received by Sundance and by Cloverleaf and Shiloh Estates. Most importantly, it upholds the city's growth guidelines, promoting compatible urban growth and respecting the existing character of the area. So in closing, I appreciate your time and careful consideration. We hope the developer will collaborate to adjust the plan for a balanced and beneficial outcome. If, however, the developer's unwilling to engage, we respectfully urge the city council to deny Barber Farm zoning requests 1074 as currently proposed. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. And for your past correspondence. Next. And again, go ahead, make a little line there so when you're ready to go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is John Wunder, W-U-N-D-E-R. I live at 925 Bluegrass Drive West in Cloverleaf Meadows. I am here to request the Billings City Council to deny the proposed Billings Zone Change 1074 involving the Barber Farm tract. My wife and I moved into Cloverleaf Meadows in 2002. We've been there almost 24 years now. Because of the nice houses on large, one-acre-plus tracks, safe neighborhood, quiet neighborhood, it was then and still is today, a great place to raise a family. And we and likely, my wife and I and likely many others in the neighborhood, we're going to be adversely affected if the zone change is going to be approved as submitted. Contrary to what the Billings, or what the staff has stated tonight regarding the compatibility of, of this proposed zone change with the surrounding area, it, it's highly incompatible with the existing single-family homes, as, as others have stated. I think staff mentioned that in Cloverleaf Meadows where we live, the average dwelling density is point, point eight dwelling units per acre. And so this proposed zoning is going to have 6.67 dwellings per acre? How can that be compatible? I mean, that's, that's illogical. And so as also mentioned previously, the proposed increased, increased dwelling density, it's going to reduce home values, no doubt about it, in the single-family homes, both in Cloverleaf and, and the other surrounding subdivisions on single, single families. It's going to hurt us all. That is not in the public interest. And so I did have concerns on, on having access on, on Bluegrass Drive West to Broadwater, but it's my understanding, at least there's no plans for it now. I hope there never will be a plan because that, that park in the Cloverleaf Meadows park, that gets heavy usage by children and everybody else. It would create a safety hazard, certainly would, would affect the public health, safety, and welfare. So just to summarize, as you've seen from other testimony, it's blatantly obvious that the rezoning of the Barber Farm tract as proposed is not in the overall public interest. There is a need for more housing in Billings, but rezoning the Barber Farm tract as proposed is totally inappropriate and should be denied. I thank you very much for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council, mayor, and friends and neighbors. My name is Brenda Larson. My home is at 1145 Bluegrass Drive West in Cloverleaf Meadows. I am speaking in opposition to zone change application 1074. All of the homeowners, the 49 homeowners in Cloverleaf Meadows are opposed to this zone change. And I specifically wish to address criteria seven and eight, which require that zone changes promote compatible urban growth and respect the established character of the district. Thoughtful zoning does not simply accommodate growth. It ensures that new development integrates with and enhances existing neighborhoods. It honors the history, scale, and community expectations that residents have invested in for decades, whether they're county or city residents. The proposed rezoning would allow densities up to four dwellings per lot and mixed commercial uses. Immediately surrounding the site are well-established neighborhoods of low-density, single-family homes. Approving this zone change would create an abrupt and incompatible transition that directly undermines both of these criteria. We are not opposed- We are not opposed to all growth. We are opposed to growth that disregards the character of our community and overwhelms our schools, roads, and services. We are opposed to developments that have no clear plans for traffic flow when arterials will be completed, lots of maybes, ifs, and sometime in the future. In two thousand twenty-three, the state mandated that cities like Billings allow duplexes in every neighborhood previously reserved for single-family homes, effectively eliminating true single-family zoning, and we were shocked that this is a new reality. And then on October first of this year, the state went further and stripped Billings citizens of our longstanding right to protest rezonings by petition. The West End residents filling this room tonight are proof that we have not lost our voice or our deep concern for our community's future. State laws may have taken away our petitions, but it cannot take away our expectation that local leaders will still listen. We are asking you, this council, to stand with your constituents and preserve what little control we have left regarding the character and the livability of the neighborhoods we love. Therefore, we respectfully urge the council to consider the potential impacts of this zone change carefully and to ultimately deny zone change application ten seventy-four. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I don't have much to add, otherwise I'm a representative of Twin Pines Development. My name is Randy Spear. I live at forty-two twenty Limerpine Lane. And as a representative, we are opposed to this ten seventy-four. It is incompatible, as you've heard. If any of you have actually driven out there during rush hour, I don't know about staff or council members or you, mayor, it's terrible. And to dump another three hundred, four hundred, five hundred cars on Central, which is actually the only road that it's going to access to, basically, you're really creating a safety problem. So again, I do agree with everything that's been said. I would like to poll this audience, who's actually in favor of this? Amazing. Who is opposed? You are the representative of this group. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
My name is Roger Aldinger. I'm a representative of Aldinger Acres subdivision, which I developed some some years ago when Forty-Eighth Street was still a gravel street. I sent most of most of you, if not all of you, an email, so you got most of the history there. But I guess I just want to agree with the people who've spoken and say the only way that I can see that this is compatible with the area surrounding it is if you totally ignore the six subdivisions that are surrounding it. Six subdivisions. Most of the people from my subdivision did not come. There are a few here. I spoke to them and invited them, and they said, yeah, we're opposed, but what good does it do to protest? So they didn't come. I hate to say, I hated to see that attitude, but that's the way it is. I'm just just expressing, again, thirty-three homeowners in my subdivision, forty-nine in Cloverleaf, so you're at eighty, and that doesn't include the other four subdivisions that are adjacent to those. And so the only way you can get to this compatibility is if you look at what is being developed across the north side of Central. That may be compatible, but there is a boundary between the two, which is the street central. So so that the compatibility is a big issue. Traffic is another. I'm looking, we were told by the engineer at the initial meeting that there could be up to four hundred units. Four hundred units, two cars or two vehicles per unit, that's eight hundred, in addition to what we already have, which is a problem. And that doesn't include what is coming in from the new subdivision on the opposite side of the street, nor does it include what is proposed down the road when the when a new school is built. So anyway, those are just some concerns, along with the safety and the the high traffic, moving the traffic, but the compatibility aesthetically is my biggest concern. Not opposed to duplexes. I own some, but I am opposed to all look-alikes. Let's get some 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 aesthetic value in there, and then I'm okay. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dean Kyle. I live at forty-six twenty-seven Sunburst Lane, and I'm opposed to the Barber Farm's zone change proposal ten seventy-four. I believe it's inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. I also believe that Central Avenue is a natural barrier, and we should not be considering anything south of Central Avenue, Forty-four or Twin Pines, and it should only be considered just the properties that surround the property in question. And so I'm asking that tonight that that the property should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Cole, council members, my name, oop, I'm short, I'm sorry. Mayor Cole, council members, my name is Elise Hable. My husband and I reside at three fourteen Lightstream Lane. He and I both work nonprofit jobs and pull together every dime we have for our home, and we're very proud of it. I'd like to address a few comments that have been made, both in this meeting and in the previous zoning meeting. The first that I'd like to address is the the development that was brought up to the south of Central. We acknowledge that development to be owned by McCall Homes. This poses a different character character display as opposed to the Happy Homes. Sorry. We're all familiar with the McCall development. We're familiar with the curb appeal and their desire to connect the community. That is why that development might bring a little bit more curb appeal and connectedness than the proposed Happy, similar development to the Happy Homes. I'd also like to address that the traffic study that has been that has been conducted does not account for the for the population that will be residing at the McCall development to the south of Central. Those results will still have to wait until that development has been fully inhibited. I would also just like to finish by saying, by addressing a comment that the, while we concerned neighbors are here tonight, the rest of Billings is not here, I would just like to ask that the council acknowledges these neighbors and their willingness and excitement to come out before you tonight on behalf of our the homes that we're proud to own. And I really also just want to take a moment to thank you for asking very thoughtful questions tonight and listening to those that have come before you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Catcher. I reside at four six three zero South Woodhaven Way, and I want to reiterate what was just said and express gratitude to you for being thoughtful and asking tough questions to the developers and their representatives. Like everyone in this audience here, I oppose the development as it is currently proposed. This is my first city council meeting. I'll be brief. I came here with an open mind. We love Billings. We love where we live. We love the area. We love seeing the open spaces and the open fields, and we recognize that it is inevitable that they will be developed. So I came here with an open mind to watch and see what was proposed. A little background, I spent the majority of my adult life as a law enforcement officer. I know what it means, and I know what it feels like to sit on the stand, as the developers did moments earlier, and be asked very difficult questions. Representative Owen, you you did a great job with your questions. They were direct, they were concise. And while I was watching them, my mind went back to being on the stand and having tough questions directed at me. As a law enforcement officer, when I take the stand, I am proposing to change the future of somebody's life. These developers are proposing to change the future of my life, of my neighbors' lives, and the lives of all these people here who live in this area. When you take that responsibility, you better be prepared to answer tough and direct questions. You do not change other people's lives without taking into consideration all the facts, all the details, all the implications, and before you do that, you better be prepared to have some answers. I told you I came here with an open mind. After watching the developers and their representatives squirm and equivocate and hem and haw and have ambiguous answers to try to shirk your good and direct questions, I am deeply concerned. And after a short time watching them, I oppose this development. I oppose this proposal, and I hope that the developers will take more time and consideration before anything's approved and we move forward. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And again, go ahead and just to reduce the transition time.
Mayor, city council, I just want to start out, well, I've got to give you my address and name. Carmen Kyle, forty-six twenty-seven Sunburst Lane. And I just want to say thank you for your service, just to kind of change the direction a little bit. And I do want to say that I did look at the three hundred and seventeen-page packet that was given to all of you before all of your additions, and I did review and read the section relating to the this specific request, and it did cause me to have a question or two. One question was, what is the additional development that's going to be coming before the city council within the next few months? How does that affect and how is it tied to this particular zoning change request ten seventy-four? I I don't know. I don't know exactly what that means. The other question that I have for the for the group is relating to parks. Jennifer was nice enough to mention the parks. And we have a very large, very nice park, and so does Cloverleaf, and and we pay for that with our HOA fees. So what's going to happen when in that section, it said the city would not require the developer to put in any park? They could put something in if they wanted to, but they're not required to. So does that mean that we're going to get overrun and we have to pay for the maintenance on that? I I don't know. Can you guys answer those questions for us? Anyways, I am opposed to this change because I don't feel like it's to the benefit of our community. I also feel like there's a lot of people who don't have an advocate here today, and I'm talking about the people who may be renting these units. And specifically, no offense against the developer or anybody else, but I have done some reading and research online, and there's a lot of comments made from people in other subdivisions from the same developer that there were concerns because the homes are not built with proper insulation and that the costs of heating and et cetera are extremely high. If we're really trying to do affordable housing, my heart is broken in the fact that I don't want somebody like my parents to come in and need to be here for medical or other purposes and find out that their heat bill is four times as much as it is for my house. That breaks my heart, and there these people aren't here to talk for themselves. So I'm trying to talk for them, and I just appreciate, again, your time, your effort, and your great questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And speaking of questions, we won't answer those questions until everything is done, and we'll try to maybe come back to those. We'll ask staff to do that, or I can do that as well, so. But go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Cole and city council, my name is Steve Grosso. My wife and I live at nine twenty-five Bluegrass Drive East, and we raised all our children in that home. We've been here for twenty-three years. It's in Cloverleaf. Sorry. Is that better? Karen's picture to the north was a public sign, a notice about the potential zone change. It was not a photo of the single-family homes on the southern border of Cloverleaf. It made it look like there was nothing to the north but a dry grass patch in the zone change sign. Cloverleaf is actually to the north of where those photos were taken, and so the engineer mentioned the skinny little right-of-way between the Yegun property and Cloverleaf, between Broadwater and Grand, called the Forty-Fourth Street West Expansion. And that borders between the Yegun property and the entire eastern border of Cloverleaf Meadows. What are the implications to the residents whose backyards currently are adjacent to that property? What will the traffic look like? When Shiloh was developed, there are now sections of road interrupted by roundabouts, but those roundabouts serve purposes of controlling traffic. And in our observance, also, the control of the racing that occurs along what we call the Shiloh Speedway. Nightly, when there is not snow on the ground or hazardous rain, there are races between all those roundabouts, and you can hear them from our neighborhood, you can hear them beyond our neighborhood. Is the Forty-Fourth Street expansion going to become Shiloh Speedway Annex at my backyard? Children play in these backyards. Some of the backyards have fences, but some do not. In order to be in compliance with the Cloverleaf bylaws, these are to be PVC, three-beam, open fences, but that doesn't provide sound and safety barriers against the high traffic that these backyards will now see. Does the Forty-Fourth Street expansion plan include sound and safety barriers to mitigate the risks of the increased traffic and racing that these Cloverleaf eastern border backyards will see? As I understand it, the answer is no, since the expansion does not have funding or plans for that, if I heard that correctly this evening. The developers' anticipated timeline of beginning the project should not mandate a permanent and irreversible premature decision by the city council. So we respectively submit that you oppose the annexation and zone change ten seventy-four as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Amy Iverson. I live at forty-six sixteen South Woodhaven Way, Aldingers or Aldingers Acres. I've lived in this house or lived there for twenty-two years, raised two kids, my husband and I together. Very proud of my children and of what they have accomplished. I am a mother. I'm a wife. I'm a business owner here in town. I'm very concerned with the zoning change one zero seven four because of the, I guess I would say, it does not match the other subdivisions around it. Sorry. And because of the job that I have, I'm kind of a nerd, and I like numbers, so I just did a quick little figure. Your average in those four subdivisions that are pretty close around it, your average density is one point three seven nine five. So this is four, what they're proposing, the six point seven per acre, that is four point eight times more than the surrounding subdivisions. How, how can that even close to becoming compatible to what is already there? It does not. So in my research, I, you know, again, kind of a nerd, but that's fine. There are only four major streets that service the west end. You have Rimrock, you have Grand, you have Central, and you have King Avenue. We built Ben Steel in two thousand seventeen. What accommodations have we done to account for all of that traffic? Because again, I've lived there for twenty-two years. I was there way before Ben Steel. I was way there before most of those subdivisions were, and it's deadly. I mean, I I don't know. You guys probably have the figures, and you can look that up, but... But your city services, I'm sure, have been extended way beyond capacity due to the heavy traffic. There's nowhere to go. Not that long ago, there was a death on Grand Avenue. So where'd all the traffic go? Because if I remember right, Central was partway shut down too. So you gotta had to go to King, or you had to go up around to fifty-sixth, I believe, and down to Rimrock. There is just, you can't add a thousand more cars to this without somebody dying again. So that's all I really wanted to say. I appreciate their time. I appreciate your service. Have a good evening.
Good. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Before we close the public comment period, do I want to cut anybody off? Okay. Please make a line if there's anybody after this gentleman.
Uh, my name is Jared Browning. I live in the, uh, Aldinger Acres subdivision, also four-seven-one-nine South Woodhaven Way. We've been there for about seven years, and really, it's been a great place to raise our family as well. I can, I concur with others who have been here, uh, saying the same thing. Two years ago, uh, my big complaint with this is just the infrastructure. I think we've already talked about that. Two years ago, the subdivision that went in right south of us, uh, we didn't think it was going to be a big concern, but apparently because of, of Billings City Water and Services, we've had that, a big problem here, obviously. And our water, uh, that we pull from our neighborhood as a well, um, any influx of people in that area dropped our well a significant amount of feet. Not sure if that was mentioned here tonight or not, but any subs, any structure in that way, we lost all of our water pressure and, and, uh, ability to really supply our homes in our, in our subdivision. We are on a neighborhood well, and so that's just one small evidence of any kind of building structures in that neighborhood that just doesn't have the infrastructure to build it up. The traffic right now is, is crazy. There's no place for people to go. Already in the mornings, when you're parked outside trying to get out on Grand Avenue because of the school, because of the, the subdivisions that are going in, it's a significant amount of traffic. Anytime between, uh, seven-thirty and about nine o'clock, it's just back-to-back bumper-to-bumper traffic, no, nowhere for people to go. There is a pretty, pretty significant problem there. There's just too many people at a short amount of time. And the safety, obviously, those are the things I've been kind of concerned about also with, with where people are going to be going and, and the sidewalks and subdivisions. So maybe in the cases of looking at properties in Billings, there's already structures in place right now that can use city services that are already there. Sewers is there, water is there. I just drove past two of them tonight, uh, on, on Central Avenue. Uh, across from City College, there's a pretty good significant amount of acres there that nobody's building on. It would probably be a, a great spot to build on in that case for this kind of a, a structure. I'm not sure if there's homes going into this. Again, I apologize coming in late. I didn't realize this was happening tonight. I would be coming a little bit more prepared. But, uh, the, just the infrastructure is the problem, in my opinion. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and city officials here, uh, for keeping, letting us be here so long. I did send y'all an email, uh, but there were a couple items that, um, I didn't address in the email. Uh, number one is-
And ma'am, your name and address.
Oh, yeah, that might help too. Janelle Lendy, forty-six, nineteen, Shining Light Lane. Um, when it comes to the use of Broadwater, that is at the second, um, entrance to the Sundance subdivision. And they talk about how nobody's really going to be using it. It's all going over to Shiloh if it comes, the opening. But that is our second and exit and entrance, uh, off of Forty-Eighth Street West. And the traffic is so heavy, you know, you can't take a left, you go right, um, and you have to go around in a big circle in order to get where you actually wanted to go because you can't get out of the neighborhood off of Forty-Eighth or out of the other entrance off of Central at the forty-six-hundred block. Um, I also had a concern that I did email Mike Waters, who is supposed to be an elected official for the county, and asked some questions of him. Why are we not represented since we are in the county, um, on this juncture of annexing county property to Billings, uh, to the city of Billings? Uh, those are my only other concerns other than the big email I sent you. And, um, thank you for your time, and I oppose the annexation and the proposal of the ten seventy-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Before we close the public comment period? No one's coming forward, no one's standing up, so we'll close the public comment period. Thank you, and, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, for your patience and your respectful manner. Um, this is what's right with America. Uh, thank you for being here. Uh, now the hard part, back to council. Follow-up on some questions, councilmembers? Uh, if you, if you, uh, excuse me. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Rupsis. So, uh, Taylor, you've heard, uh, some of these comments. Feel free to respond as you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Rupsis. Yeah, I, speaking with some of the neighbors, especially at the West End Task Force meeting, you know, we're also human. We're not immune to understanding their feelings. And I guess just to address some of the, the comments, and in particular, as it relates to the criteria for the zone change. So looking at it from an urban growth, um, from an urban growth standpoint, um, we are providing a mix of housing options, which is what urban growth is intended to do, both mix of housing options, commercial uses adjacent to those, to those housing options so that people aren't having to travel all across town. Add a density that, albeit it is significantly higher than those adjacent to the neighborhoods, is not super high, in particular relating to the growth policy, how that outlines high, medium, and low density. I would also like to just maybe pose as a question both to council and, and to the, the neighbors, is that annexing into the city of Billings, there are three single-family residential neighborhood districts, N-one, N-two, and N-three. Obviously, we've, we've selected N-two for this application. However, with the state law, even if we were to change that to an N-three zone district, a similar density could be achieved by any developer, whether that's our client, a future developer, whoever that is. And so I'd ask, in terms of how that relates to the criteria that the city evaluates as far as urban go, urban growth, um, and how it relates to the neighborhoods around it. Unfortunately, the state law, regardless of what the proposed zone change is, kind of dictates that at this point, because we are largely proposing duplex housing units and achieving that density. And so even if somebody were to come in and do a N-three zone district, it allows for duplexes. And so at that point, the city and/or the neighbors are banking on a single-family house developer, um, building this out. Couple other notes, the TIS that is prepared for the subdivision aspect of this, it was prepared after the Clearwater and Forty-four West development to the south, so it does account for that traffic within the statistics on it. And I'd be open to any questions on coming out, coming out of the public comment period from council.
Okay. Um, are there any questions for Taylor? Don't see any. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, council, uh, we'll kick it, uh, back to you, but before we do, I just wanted to ask or answer or attempt to answer one question that was raised, uh, about, uh, park dedication and, uh, Wyatt, feel free to correct me if I get this wrong, but the question was, uh, raised about, um, uh, the dedication of park and how that process works. Uh, under state law, that's usually reserved to the subdivision process. It could be required as part of our annexation. That is not part of the proposal for annexation on this, but, uh, typically, the subdivision would be required to either put up about ten percent of their land as a park or put up money, uh, equivalent to that ten percent that goes into a kitty for improvements in that area. It's up to the developer to make that choice. Uh, that process, you, again, usually happens in subdivision, which is down the road. That has not happened, uh, at this point, so we can't speak to that, uh, uh, what might happen in this case more specifically. Uh, is that a fair description, Wyatt?
Mayor and council, uh, yes, that is, as far as the subdivision process, there is, um, requirements in the planned neighborhood development, uh, process for some two percent open space. Uh, when Karen was making the presentation, she did highlight a couple of areas that they're proposing for that, so that is being accommodated there, but you're correct on the subdivision.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that's about two percent. That's a, a separate requirement. Yeah, very good. Okay, uh, back to council. Council, uh, how would you like to proceed? Councilmember Kennedy?
I have two questions. Wyatt, just a quick question. If the developer were to withdraw on this, how would that, um, if they withdrew this tonight in the council, um, accepted that? That wouldn't delay, and they could work with the neighborhood and, and everyone to see if they could come up with something that would be palatable? So what would the withdrawal look like?
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor and Council, so at this point in the process, uh, if, yeah, if there was a request for withdrawal, you, the council, could entertain that request. Um, if you approved it, um, basically, it's, I guess, to, to specifically, if you, if the zone change was denied tonight by you, it's a one-year waiting period to come back for the request. So if you were to entertain a withdrawal tonight, the application could be withdrawn, and then it could come back sooner, you know, as, as soon as, basically, if, if they put something else together or wanted to, to approach it a different way or something. So that would be the, the process there.
Second question I have then is of the developer, would you be willing to withdraw this evening?
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Given, you know, the, the potential to be blocked out for a year, um, from a additional application, should this get denied, I think we would move forward with withdrawing or requesting to withdraw the application tonight and potentially retool the application and come back before City Council with that.
Thank you. Are you asking now?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Wyatt, let me just ask you about the procedure on that, um, and, and Anna wants to comment. Could you address a little more on the procedure and where it, it goes back in the process? To what extent? Would that be rep publication, re-notification, uh, those kind of details, Anna?
So there's, there's two ways that this could be done. Withdrawal is one of them. That would have to be a whole new application process, or the council could refer the application back to the zoning commission, which gives the applicant the ability to update the zone change layout. We can re-notice the public, have a new zone change commission. So I think, given the context, I would defer to the applicant and to council, but that is also a second option, is putting it back to the zoning change commission and allowing that adjustment and re-notice, et cetera.
Very good. And just to clarify, uh, that would then, um, give an opportunity for, uh, uh, changes, uh, also a new hearing before the zoning commission, and that's where they would pick up the process.
That's correct. The one catch here is that this requires a sixty percent majority vote whenever this is done, is this has to be referred back to the zoning commission with a sixty percent majority vote by council.
Okay. Okay. Um, thank you for, uh, discussion of that, uh, procedural issue. Uh, Councilmember
All right. Very good. Thanks. I want to ask about that, because I thought we put that in, and it was probably just before your time, but, um, we didn't have the ability to send something back to the zoning commission, uh, for a long time, and I, and I thought that we put that in there, but the only reason we were to be sending something back was that if information came up, new information came up that was, was not known and had to be reconsidered. I didn't think that was ever put in with the intention of letting them go back and adjust their application. Wyatt, can you, do you remember, it, this was just, it was a couple of years ago?
That is sounding vaguely familiar. Not something we've had to deal with in the past, but-
I, I would say there is something new tonight, there is something new tonight, as far as we just got new, um, maps with the phase one, phase two. That's all new information to us, that I don't even know if the zoning commission had that information. They got the same thing, information we got. I think it's different than what we got tonight. That's the only, that's the only new information, I think.
Uh, Wyatt or staff? I think Councilmember Rupsis, you're putting that question to staff or?
Um, Councilmember Rupsis, we're, we're gonna have to, we'll have to look in here to the regs. I can't, I, I'm not positive on what you, I know what you're saying, and I know when we made the amendment, I don't, um, I'd have to look at the exact language to verify the requirements, um, in terms of what has to be, um, have occurred to send it back that way, the way Anna's describing, which is, is one way you can do it, but we'd, we'd have to look here to verify it.
And I'm, I'm sorry to say-
Go ahead.
Was that just on the zoning, or was it, because the zoning commission doesn't have anything to do with annexation questions, right?
Correct. Yeah, and so that, yeah, the new, I, I, I think clarifying the other comments about the annexation and new information, yeah, the, the zoning, we get, we give the overview for the zoning commission, but you're the ones who decide on annexation, so there's that whole, there's that piece too. And the zoning commission is reviewing it in the anticipation that it's going to be brought into the city, and then, you know, they're the city zoning commission. So I, I don't know, yeah, what they would have known or not. I mean, I, they would have known everything that they would need to know for what they're doing, but you're deciding the annexation.
And there might also be some question about whether we can require the referral as opposed to this situation where it might be a referral at the request of the developer. But, um, Councilmember Sean, Councilmember Owen, head.
That was going to be the distinction I would make, is that I, if I can remember correctly, part of it was us putting in that amendment so that this body could refer it back to the zoning commission, regardless of what the developer requested, if I remember correctly. But it sounds like to me what they're requesting is a withdrawal. I feel like that's been formally made. I, my question to Wyatt is, what is the dramat, is there a dramatic difference between these two processes of totally withdrawing the application, going back to zoning? Is it just timeline?
So, yes, withdrawing the application would require a new zone change fee, and then us re, a new submittal date, whereas a referral back to the zoning commission does kind of help them with their timeline associated with it and the associated fee. I mean, Councilmember Rupsis is correct in the sense that new information can be required. I, I feel like that kind of could be found by council, should they so choose to, based on testimony and based on, as Councilmember Neese said, the phasing of the resolution. You'd have to delay associated the vote on the annexation to run concurrently with the zone change as well, because you cannot act on the annexation without having a zone change assigned to it. So that's part of our city code.
Councilmember Owen?
Mayor, I was only going to add that, at least for me, I think what we heard out of Public Works, that there's been more traffic analysis conducted that hasn't maybe been attached to our document, would also fall under the heading of new information. It's information that would be relevant to me, because I think while traffic volume isn't inherently a concern, traffic flow and traffic patterns is for me, and it sounds like there's a study we haven't had a chance to look at, and I would like a chance to look at it.
Okay. Councilmember Gillan?
Oh, thank you. And I appreciate everyone's, uh, real, um, patience and really thoughtful input, and you came well-prepared in terms of, uh, um, being well-educated in terms of, uh, referencing the, the ten criteria. But I have to say that I wouldn't be, not be able to come to a different conclusion than what the zoning, uh, commission came with, with their unanimous recommendation. We're talking about, we're not talking about, uh, a radically different density. We're talking about N-two. We're not talking about four-story buildings, much less skyscrapers or, or big changes. We're talking about N-two. That's eighty-eight percent of that property. Um, yeah, I, I don't even know what the developer's going to go back and do. What do they resort back to, um, if, if we, if we send this back? They have nothing to work with. So like, I think, I just, I find it really, like, we need to be thinking about, not only, we need to be able to think about- we need to be able to think about, if we're meeting state law, local ordinances, balancing the interests of the property owner and their, their developer and the future users of that property. We need to, to balance that with the interests of, of surrounding people. We also need to balance it with the interest of the rest of the city, and making sure that we have development densities that, that can pay for their own way, that, that help with the infrastructure. And I think what we've seen with the state legislature intervening is a course correction, that we cannot sustain the patterns we've been using in the past. And so, I, I just, it, it seems, I don't know what the developer can do, um, if we send this back, honestly. So, I, I'm not really supportive of, of withdrawal, but, um, obviously, I'm, I'm just one voice here.
Uh, very good. Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, mayor. I, um, you know, I'm looking at this property and I would, it's, it's landlocked, and it's by, by county high, you know, very low-density properties, which I would enjoy living in. Um, and so, I, I understand, I understand there. I, I live in a low-density area as well, and having, uh, a development like this come in would be concerning to me. But it is, at the same time, it's, it's, it's owned by these people who want to put property in, and the state law limits us to what we can and can't do. And so, what's, I'm looking for a way that, the way that we can, how this can be done. Now, you know, I've talked about transition. I, I think, I, I don't like the way the zoning is right now. I would like to see some additional transition. Yes, there's not much between N3 and 2. Your frontage, if I remember correctly, it's, your frontage is, I think, 100 feet on N3 and 50 on N2, something like that. So you are going to have larger lots in there. It's going to be a little bit lower density, not a lot, but it, it's going to be lower, and you are going to have townhomes. That's what this developer wants to buy or build. The state says you can build townhomes, homes all day long in N3 property. I don't like it, um, but that's something we, as a body, a community, have to tell our state legislators to change. Um, that's something they overwrote. So it is not up to us as a city council to say, you can only build so, single-family or duplexes. All we can look at is, is, in our toolbox, all that we have is some density is, in our area is N, is N3. That's the lowest density that we can build. N4 is county-only. We can't, and that's not in our regs. We can't go to N4. Uh, again, unless this body were to change that and add N4 into our, our area, but, but that's not going to happen anytime soon. But my concern is, um, you, you know, as Mayor Cole said, the time, the time you can try to get development happening and connectivity, which by the way, I don't like the idea that a lot of these properties are not connected well, um, because they're all kind of blocked off. The one connection you have is to the north, and the, the property there, and I looked at their, their, um, their site map, it, it's a temporary cul-de-sac there designed one day to connect to Broadwater Avenue. But that is, when they envisioned, they anticipated connecting to Broadwater. So it's not a surprise to the neighbors. I know when I bought my property, when I looked at properties 30 years ago, I looked at the maps because I wanted to see where all these roads were going to connect, because I didn't want to have that change. So that's not a surprise that Broadwater's going to develop, it's going to connect to their property. It's going to be a long time. And because this is going to be phased, there's going to be a lot of changes between now, uh, between phase one and phase two. My, my, the only way I can see this happening is, on the annexation, is seeing the developer build not only the south side of Broadwater, but the north side as well, from there all the way over to, uh, 40, 40A Street. And if those properties ever come into the city and are annexed in, then the developer reimbursed for that. But that would be the only thing. Then, I don't think phase two should even be built until Broadwater to Shiloh is, is completed through whatever phased Public Works has to do. And at that point in time, I think, then, then Broadwater will be able to handle that traffic. You won't have a lot of cut-through traffic.
Uh, councilmember Neese, I'm just gonna catch off and, and just remind us, we, we gotta, we're, we're really getting deep in the weeds, right? So.
And so, unless something like that can pass through, and then, and then on the zoning where, because if the developer's gonna, if we're gonna approve a, a withdrawal, we're going to back to zoning, I want to indicate what I would be, so they, developer knows, what I would like to see, uh, on this property come back to us, if it comes back. The same thing on this, on the, uh, the east and west sides. The best we can do, I, I like transitions, I would say, have a, a transition of N3 along either side of it. It's going to be a little bit lower density, they can still build duplexes there and allow them to do the N, N2, and I think someone in the public comment mentioned that, and I think that was, is a good way to consider that. But I think the developer needs to build that transition as much as they can within their border of the property. Um, the only other consideration is Broadwater, in my opinion, it, I know it's a collector now, but eventually it's going to grow to be an arterial. I would like to see some CMU1 up, up at the top of there, because with Shiloh, you're going to need some smaller commercial development up there, and, but that's, that could be, maybe zone change later on.
Okay, I'm gonna recognize councilmember, uh, Shaw, and then we'll come back to, uh, the developer to see, uh, because councilmember Gillik raises a very good question. What, what would be the point of a delay? Uh, what might happen? And of course, we're not going to hold you to that, but it'd be interesting to know if, if the developer has any thoughts.
Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Shaw?
I appreciate that. I was gonna say, I have a lot of thoughts like that. I would have a lot of comments I would love to respond to, but I want to just know where we are in the process. It sounded to me like the developer requested a withdrawal. Are we waiting for a motion on that? I, I think, then we can argue the merits of it.
Uh, he, or, or.
Or is, does that automatically trigger it? I, I, we haven't really done this very much, so I'm.
I, no, I think, I think, I think it was, uh, more conceptual at that point, and Anna then raised the option of this second option, and so I think we do want to hear from the developer.
Okay.
But, um, uh, before we do that, Wyeth, you wanted to interject something?
I just, all I just wanted to do is, is call out, in terms of what we were talking about regarding the, referring the application back to the zoning commission, um, and it's in our, uh, council decision process with zoning applications, and it, and it basically, like, part of what Anna described, referring the application back to the zoning commission for an additional public hearing based on a determination that, one, new information has been submitted that the applicant and public has not had a reasonable opportunity to examine and comment on. Two, or two, new information has been presented that was never submitted or considered by the zoning commissioner staff. A city council referral back to the zoning commission will require publication of a new legal ad, posting of the property, mailing to the surrounding owners. A referral back to the commission under this section requires a 60, as Anna says, 60% majority vote of the present and voting members of the council, and may only be done once by the city council.
Uh, I, I guess we have a question about the procedure before we hear from, uh, Taylor, and maybe the same thing, councilmember Boyet.
Just a question on that, Wyeth. Is, um, does that mean it's the same zoning and everything just to look at this new information? Or could it be changed? Because this, this evening we were told, we can't do any changes, so if it does go back to the zoning commission, can there actually be changes made on the zoning?
Um, councilmember.
Not, where if, if not, are we looking at the same map and all of that?
Councilmember Kennedy and mayor and council, my understanding is that, that, this new information and that discussion and all could result in some sort of change, potentially? I mean, that's, I think, what the intent of that is, but I don't, but not necess- I mean, I guess, maybe, but that's what that's about, is to go back and reconsider it based on new information that's being considered by the zoning commission and then by you. So, yeah, I mean, I think that could happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Taylor, uh, if you just withdrew, that issue goes away. Um, there's, you, but it might take a little bit more time, you'd have to resubmit, you'd make whatever changes. You're entitled, you can get a vote up, vote down, it's up to you. We can't force you to, uh, to withdraw, so, uh, back to you.
Yeah, no, appreciate the opportunity, Mayor Cole. I think, just given, you know, new information, not infor- information, 60% uh, need for the, the vote even to just refer it back, I would stick with the request for withdrawing the application. That would give us the opportunity to actually meet again with the neighborhood, um, with a new plan before we even get to zoning commission, so.
Very good. You're reaffirming your request to withdraw?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Boyet?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the agent's, uh, request to withdraw. That'll start our talk now.
Very good. So we have the, the motion to accept that, um, and councilmember, uh, Kennedy, you had?
I'll second.
Okay, so that's the, uh, uh, motion that is on the floor. Um, discussion. Councilmember Shaw?
I will support the motion. Um, I think it's the best path forward for both the developers and the neighborhood. I, I want to reiterate, thank you guys again for being so respectful when you came. I feel like you did a very good job of hitting your points. Um, we understand, usually when people come to city council, they're upset about something, and so you did a very good job, I, in my opinion, of managing that. Um, like councilmember Gillik, I, I'm not sure what tools the developer has to adjust this, but I think, given the situation we're in now, that process is really important, and I'm hoping that at least the neighborhood can feel like they've been heard and get some of these questions answered, because you had some legitimate questions about parkland, about can casinos go here, can nightclubs go there? I, all of those can be answered, and I think will help set your minds at ease. So, in my opinion, I think this is the, the best path, um, and I really hope that this can come back to council in a timely manner with some adjustments, um, that will make it more palatable for the area, because it, as, as many of you said, housing is so important in billings, and so we all know we really desperately need it, and it's difficult when change comes to each of our areas. Balancing that is a struggle that this body has to deal with, and so we appreciate your in, your input. I really appreciate it, and, um, thank you all for being here.
Very good, thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Councilmember Owen?
Mayor, I don't want to make a, 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 a friendly amendment or any sort of change to the motion unless I have to, but I think, um, I will also support this motion. Um, there are some things that I think were deficient here, that were not the developer's fault, that I think need to get addressed when this comes back. Um, I, we've spent a lot of time hearing from the public, and I would echo councilmember Shaw in just really praising the tone and tenor of the conversation tonight. We spent a lot on, um, the criteria seven and eight, but I find what council has been provided on criteria four to be woefully insufficient for the complexity of this project, and I think we need to in- improve the analysis around it a little bit. I was actually counting sentences, and the exa- there are exactly 16 sentences of analysis provided for criteria four, and 16 provided for criteria four in the Seneca Farm, which was unanimous and non-controversial. This is not that. And so I am concerned, it sounds like there's some traffic studies that would help the public understand, would help us as council, understand traffic flows in this area. I think those need to be disclosed, both to the zoning commission and to the public, so that those can be heard. Um, we cannot continue, I think, um, to have a conversation about community impacts without hearing from school district two. We sort of send over a request, they don't respond, and we just say box checked. I think that is procedurally insufficient, we've talked about it over and over on council. Meadowlark is jam-packed, and I mean jam-packed. We need some conversation with school district two, we need some analysis. What's their plan? Where are they going here? How do we think about this going forward? I understand, we can't deny these things based on school district impact, but I, I think we need to understand it a little bit better and have some conversations about it. Um, I also think that what we've got here from fire and police does not provide an adequate record for us to make a decision on. Uh, we need some understanding. I know that the police department already responds out here, I get that. But if we have this sort of patchwork and piecemeal road pattern, we're going to have people making reckless decisions, impulsive decisions, and trying to circumvent poor traffic flows. We need to understand what that looks like and how we will respond. And I think we've got councilmember Aspen Leiter and councilmember Rupes, who are doing good work on traffic studies and traffic calming. Um, but we don't have enough analysis here in number four to make a decision on it, in my opinion. And then lastly, um, Wyeth, please, if possible, can we provide them any information on where DEQ and the Bureau of Mines are? Because while you mentioned tonight, and I think it's accurate, that there is this concern about how septic systems are impacting nitrates, there is also a fundamental question of recharging the aquifer that is relevant to our conversation. Yes, we don't regulate septic systems, nitrates are not really our issue, but how the aquifer is recharged, and how we might think about layoff, layouts of this development and runoff in this development, and how we're getting the aquifer recharged matters for the whole West End, and I think zoning commission needs to think about that. I think we, as council, need more information to think about it. So, I don't want to make a whole bunch of conditional amendments to the motion out there, but I would hope we could provide additional information to the public and to council for future consideration here. Thank you, mayor.
Very good, thank you. Uh, further discussion on the motion. Councilmember Kennedy?
One last piece. I, I think it's very important that we clarify a few things that came out tonight. One of them is that the subdivision, uh, directly to the north of this, um, has the okay to put the roadway through their subdivision. That's been asked many, many times, and it was answered tonight. I'd like to see something in writing that, um, the homeowners or who has the decision-making to go ahead and go through that subdivision. The other piece is, is just like, uh, councilwoman Owen had talked about, is we need more clarification on these roadways. Um, when is 44th going to be put in? When is Broadwater? What's the anticipation on it? Um, that's real important. It's real important not just for this, um, annexation and subdivision, but also, it's very important to all of these people in these subdivisions around there, because they really need to know, what is the city planning on doing, or who's planning on doing what, and how is it going to take place? I think those things all need to be answered, and then I'm, I'm willing to vote for withdrawal this.
Councilmember Rupes?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I just want to address everybody here. For those of you that don't know, I live in Legends West, um, and so that's, uh, on Central Road, just east of, of Sundance, and just east of where this, um, the subdivision is, is, uh, planned. Um, over the years, I, I've been there for 21 years. I was one of the first houses in that subdivision. Um, about 15 years ago or so, a developer came through and wanted to put a big NX3 complex, which, those are the big apartment-style, um, buildings that we see off of King Avenue, uh, right at the end of, of Bell Avenue, uh, behind our subdivision. Uh, we were able to, to kill that at the time. That was before Monad was extended, before Rocky Vista University, before any of that King Avenue development. Um, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't allowed then. But two years ago, it came back, and pretty much this council, minus a couple, uh, approved it. Um, I tried to speak up for our neighborhood, I had a different perspective the second time is, uh, it came back, because of my, uh, what I'd learned by sitting in this chair. I tried to voice my, my neighborhood's concerns and, and try to minimize some of the down, downsides of that. But we now have NX3 zoned, where it is, the only option for them to get north is to come through Legends West or Twin Pines and, uh, get out to Central. Someday that will happen. So I get what you're talking about. Um, I think the scale is very much different. When we're talking about zoning, we're talking about types of land use, and somebody living in a house next to somebody else living in a house is not an incompatible land use. I have, Legends West is all N2, right? That's what this neighborhood is, is contemplated. We have, council has the obligation, it's called quasi-judicial, the, we act as judges, whether or not an N2 district is compatible with an, another district. I would have supported this tonight. I, I hate the type of development, but I have no ability to, um, judge based on aesthetics or build quality or neighborhood community feel, neighborhood characteristics. Those things don't exist during the vote, the zoning challenge, or the zoning, uh, process. So the challenge is, the developer gets this, uh, back to you, is, is really, what are the other tools? There is no single zoning district that is lower density, uh, like you would want next to your, your neighborhoods, from what we hear. It doesn't exist. So N2 can be anything from your house to, uh, a tiny Happy Homes duplex. That's the span of what's allowed in that zone. I don't know what the developer is going to do, I'm, I'm happy that they're willing to engage. Um, like I said, if I could, if I could vote against something because of aesthetics, I would have done it. And I've, I did vote against, uh, the ones that went down, uh, across from Costco, uh, because I felt it wasn't safe place to put neighborhood residential under that ditch and, and where we're going to build residential. wasn't a safe place to put neighborhood residential under that ditch and where we're gonna build reservoirs. I also mentioned in my invocation about travel and how that opens your eyes to some things. We like to complain about traffic here in Billings, but go to any other city our size or larger, I just came back from Mexico City. You wanna talk about traffic? We don't have traffic here. I understand, it takes a few extra seconds to get out on Central, because I do it every day. I know what you're talking about. I hear you. I won't be on council when this decision is made. It'll be a brand-new council. Six new people will be sitting up here the next time it comes back. So who knows how they're gonna do? I don't know what the developer is gonna do, how this will come back. I encourage you to stay connected, but temper your expectations on what can be done here. There are not many tools in the toolbox. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rupstas. That's a good segue. I just want to chime in also. I will support the motion to allow the withdrawal, that it is an opportunity to provide some perspective for the benefit of the neighborhood and echo a lot of what Councilman Rupstas just said. I would have voted in opposition to the annexation of this property, based on what you heard before, namely, it doesn't do anything for Cottonwood Park as required under our development agreement to at least have that negotiation. But I would've lost that battle, and it probably would've been annexed. On the issue of the zone change, I appreciate the input from the neighborhood. I don't think we've ever seen a more organized, unanimous opposition to a development, based on the issues that you already know, namely, the, in particular, the require for compatible urban growth. I said requirement, well, no, really, just that that be a factor of ten, one of ten. And it begs the question, a lot of people said, well, obviously, this is not compatible with Cloverleaf. How could it be? Were the questions? Well, we have to understand what compatibility means in this context. I appreciate that Cloverleaf is a very different neighborhood. As somebody who lives on one acre, I understand that better than many. But compatibility doesn't mean the same. Compatibility is typically measured considering both the type of development and the intensity of use. So in type of development, this is also residential. It is compatible with Cloverleaf because it is not industrial. It is not commercial. Do you stop there? Well, probably not, because you can look at this degree of intensity. So is it compatible based on Cloverleaf? Well, remember that Cloverleaf was not compatible with the wheat fields when it was moved in. It was tremendous greater density than anything around it when Cloverleaf was put in. Was the Sundance compatible with Cloverleaf? No, it was three hundred percent rate of intensity than Cloverleaf. Is the density of Cloverleaf something that our city wants? No, it is not. It is not, it creates all sorts of barriers in the cost of, to bring utilities past development of that low density. And again, I'm one of you. But it causes all sorts of problems. So here, the legislature, as you heard, passed law in two thousand twenty-three that says, and I'm quoting, Section seventy-six hyphen two hyphen three oh four, quote, "In a city with a population of at least five thousand residents, duplex housing must be allowed as a permitted use on a lot where a single-family residence is a permitted use. And zoning regulations that apply to the development or use of duplex housing may not be more restrictive than zoning regulations that are applicable to single-family residences." So arguably, the legislature has made this decision. Duplexes are equivalent to, yeah, those homes in Cloverleaf. I understand that doesn't rub people right, or maybe rub you wrong, but I think that the legislature has made that decision. So that's on that issue. Traffic, yeah, there is gonna be more traffic, all of this development. But think of what the alternative is for this body. If we were to say that, no, you can't have any more development in this property, because on this property, because it's gonna have more traffic, we're creating a de facto moratorium on any new development that might feed onto Central. That is not gonna happen. It shouldn't happen, and it won't happen. So, yeah, rush hour is, can be tough, but we're a long ways from any tipping point where we could determine that we should have a de facto moratorium. Parks, interesting question. I won't get into that. Aesthetics, I do have real concerns about the aesthetics of this developer, but remember, this is not Bozeman. We do not have the ability to require aesthetic standards. And if we did, the cost of our housing might more closely resemble Bozeman, too. And we don't want that. And so there are costs, there are benefits of more dense development. And then lastly, although we received many, many letters from people voicing very understandable concerns, what was singularly absent for most of that was any sort of acknowledgement of the developer, the owner's right to develop their property. If we have government telling you how to develop your property, when you're on, when the shoe's on the other foot, it won't feel so good. So this is just to echo Councilmember Rupstas's message, that this development could be a lot worse than what you might get here with one-story duplex development. So we'll see how this shakes out. I do appreciate the developer's desire to do something to work with the neighborhood to make this even, hopefully, a little bit more palatable, but you do need to be realistic. And thank you, Councilmember Rupstas, for making that point. Sorry for going on at length. Further discussion before we have a vote on the motion? Okay? All right? So the motion is to just accept the developer's withdrawal of the, both the annexation application and the zoning application. I assume, they go together, so Taylor, you're nodding your head. This is a package deal. So we would allow them to withdraw and come back at the time of their choosing. So if the motion is clear, if in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and for your input. That then concludes items four A, four B, and four C. And... And also item five. Oh, okay. All right. Okay. So that concludes item four and five. If everybody could exit quickly without talking, and then you can talk out in the lobby. Who did?
About what, could I ask Wyeth that question while we're, there is still...
Um, sure. Before we move on to public comment on non-agenda items, Councilmember Boyet?
So Wyeth, on number five, it showed Ward number four. We were, we were talking, we thought, we think it's Ward five.
Councilmember Boyet, yes, we're, we were going to suggest that we actually revisit, you know, look into that after you, Councilmember Rupstas, actually brought it up. So, yeah, next time, when we do this again, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. Okay, then the next item on our agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any public comment on something not on our agenda? Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that was interesting. I noticed some of your faces were like, well, I've never experienced anything like this. But it kind of fell back to what I said at the, Paul Clark, South Side Triangle. It kind of fell back what I was talking about the first time. Those streets are gonna get busy. These people are just experiencing what maybe Twenty-Seven Street has experienced in the past, or my South Side. These are neighborhoods that are gonna get apartments, they're gonna go up, cross the street from South Park, we have towers, North Park, we have towers. They might wanna eat it, put some towers up, be safe, which falls back to my agenda, parks. I know that some of you have one-acre homes, two-acre homes. Who needs a park? Well, we do, the people. These people came in, represented themselves, squashed the idea of duplexes and quads and that. For now, they withdraw their annex, which I'm down to a couple minutes. That was interesting, you guys. This is something that I've always wanted to see, and to come to a close. And so we, the Senior Citizen Center, this hat was donated by a woman. They knitted more than fifty of them, free, and these people were from New Mexico, very, very, well, the Apache, the Navajo tribes. You know how their source of income is very limited. So shout out to the senior citizens. I did experience a meal with a lot of them, and me go up and start visiting with a lot of people, shake hands. It's fun. Number two, bus stops, family services, you guys, again. That is a place where maybe I need to come to a name, to someone, and how do I get a bus stop for these people? I mean, a lot of them are walking around with wagons just to get food. We need to get a bus in there. We need to get a bus stop. It sounds like it's a bad, you know, juju. It's hard to do, but it can be done. Number three, South Side. Again, I'm worried about my neighborhood. They just experienced a little bit what's gonna happen. Okay? We have industrial in our neighborhood. We have the sugar factory, we have the refineries, we have busy streets. We've gotta fall back on some of them issues. Again, for me, law enforcement, hey, and so are street lamps that are not there. It's a dark place. Number four, South Side Pool. Can we have any plans? Does anybody know what it's gonna look like for nine million dollars? Does anybody have an idea what it's gonna look like once we finally get there at twenty million dollars? Just saying. Number five, Sixth Avenue Underpass. We're cleaning it, but we're not. So apparently, we're getting four times of cleaning so that I don't have to walk underneath that bridge and smell pigeon dew, or, you know, whatever's dead on the ground. And the nice, beautiful swamp that's in front of the Reno Club. How can we get that thing drained out? I see that they did plant some greenery. Boy, I got about halfway. Slow down traffic on Shiloh? Hey, what's wrong with speed bumps? Nobody wants to play a speed bump with a sixty-eight Camaro, let alone a Harley-Davidson. Okay? My time's up, you guys. Blessings forward. And to some of you, like I think you said, six of you are gonna be conned, we're gonna be looking at new faces. Guess who they get to look at? Public blessings.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? No one is coming forward, so we'll, we'll close the public comment, period. And council, any initiatives? Please say no. Okay. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.